Meeting to order. Today is Thursday, August 22, 2024. Time is 7:00 PM. This meeting is being filmed with Zoom. It will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. Note this meeting is being recorded for live broadcast and televised for replay by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is audio or visually recording, please acknowledge at this time. Seeing no one. Okay. Meeting ID number is 813-4161-4966. The passcode is 793-981. Dial by your location, Okay, meeting minutes of July 25 and August 8 of 24.
July 28. Meeting minutes appear complete and accurate as drafted.
July 25.
July 25. And I move they be accepted as.
I'll second that. We're going to go around the room. It requires a roll call because we have Zoom. John?
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Abstain from Corinne. And Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Meeting minutes of August 8, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second. Any further comments, questions? No? Okay, again, a roll call vote. Let's start at this end. Corinne?
Abstain.
Abstain. Dan?
Yes.
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 Amanda?
Yes.
Yes. The chair votes yes. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a request for release of lot number 11, 112 Valley Bar's Road, Colony Hill subdivision, a lot with conditional approval, contract, and its covenant. Chad, do you have anything on it?
Yes, thank you. Received a request form from Attorney Catherine Bean to release lot number 11 from the Colony Hill subdivision. And so, we could not find it. I actually found, I found a copy, but it looked very, very faded. So this is essentially a re-release. So there's no issue with that. The other request that she had was a release from the two covenants, which I sent the board. And I think Chairman wanted to speak to that.
I was just going to say, I looked, did some research on this. This lot, this subdivision, was first formulated in 1974. Those roads have been up there forever. One of the covenants was that they were supposed to construct sidewalks, and those were never done. I don't think it's fair to require this one lot to be responsible for that. Plus, my research, and if counsel wants to correct me, covenants are good for about 30 years, approximately 30 years. The courts have held unless they've changed it since then. So this has far exceeded those restrictions. So I would suggest that the board, we release the covenants as well as the lot.
You want to read it?
Anybody else can read it? You want me to read that in?
You don't need to.
You want to sign it?
I'm signing it, okay. So once a covenant released, I need those to go around, and this is release of the lot.
Oh, here, I can put it on the bookboard.
Oh, here, put it on the bookboard.
Mr. Chairman, did I make a motion that we release the lot number 11 at 112 Valley Bar's Road, release the lot in the covenant?
I'll second that. Second by Jim. Dan and Jim, yeah. Any other questions from the board, comments from the board, from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. We'll start at this end. John? Yes. Liz?
Yes.
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 Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, I heard them.
Oh, yeah, I need to hear.
Oh, yes.
Training them early.
It's not the best, but, you know, I can. I should get a new one, though. Just going to wait until we get those papers signed. Corinne, were you on in 1974? No. Neither were Dan and I, so those are way beyond us.
I was still in high school.
Yeah. Same. Should be three pages.
That's the next thing I've got.
I was in the eighth grade.
Were you?
Yeah, with the high school in 79.
That's fun, though.
Yeah, so this started in 74, so. Yeah, you were in junior high.
Some missing here. Things got to go back around.
Oh, okay.
We can do that happen.
Yeah.
Wildwood Lane stormwater permit 06-2024, lot 61. Mr. Udi?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, thanks for hearing me tonight. So I represent the builder, the developer of lot 61. This, just to give a little bit of the history, then go through the requests that we're making for a modification to the stormwater permit. The history here is that concerns are raised concerning the drainage design for lot 61, where there are 12 units that are going to be built. As a result, my client agreed. The town brought in a peer review engineer from Merrill Engineers to review the proposed drainage design that my client's engineer, existing grade, put together. Those two engineers worked together and came up with, eventually Merrill approved my client's engineer's drainage and stormwater management design for the lot 61. And we submitted that and appeared before the board to jointly make that report. On the strength of that, the planning board issued its stormwater permit, but it had a number of conditions. And then we, my office, I submitted a letter to the board requesting two modifications of that permit, stormwater permit, and that's why we're here tonight. The first condition that was imposed was condition three that we'd like a modification to. It essentially, condition three requires that as-built plans for the stormwater system be submitted before any certificates of occupancy be issued for the 12 units. And what that means is that the stormwater and drainage system has to be completely built before any unit gets an occupancy permit and can be sold. And that basically renders this project for my client completely uneconomic, and will essentially bankrupt the project. The reason being is the stormwater and drainage system cannot be completely built, which would then be the predicate to submitting an as-built plan to you, until the units are completed. So all 12 units would have to be first completed, then the stormwater system would have to be finished and completely built, then an as-built plan would be submitted, and then we would get occupancy permits from the town if you approve of the as-built plans. So a lot, a lot of time is going to pass from today until then. The way these projects work is units are typically sold on a rolling basis to fund the continued construction of the project. Otherwise, it's completely uneconomic to build housing in the Commonwealth. But I understand, and my client understands, that what the planning board wants is they don't want a developer in town to cut and run once they've sold the majority of their units and not build out what the planning board has required. They want funds in place. They want some surety in place to make sure that that doesn't happen. So the condition that we asked for initially in my letter to the board was that the last unit, unit 18A, which has a fair market value of $700,000, that no occupancy permit be issued for that unit until we submit and get approved as-built plans for the drainage system that's installed. I've had some conversations with staff, with, with a member of the board, that suggested that that wasn't palatable to the planning board. So right before this hearing, I talked to my client, and my client is prepared to submit the same type of bond, insurance bond, that we've put up for the roadways, for the value of the cost to install this entire drainage system. Now, you may ask, well, what's the value of the cost to install the drainage system? What reliability do you have for that? The chairman, your chairman asked me to, and I did submit prior to this hearing. My client went out and got three quotes from different licensed contractors to itemize the scope of work of what it will cost to build out this entire drainage system. The quotes range from $234,500. The second quote is $251,680. And the third quote is $297,500. So we've submitted those all to the board, and we want what you want. We want you to have surety that this system is going to be built, that if a bolt of lightning strikes my client, there's, there's money there to, to, to put in this drainage system. But we also want some help from the planning board, because literally, the cost to build housing in the Commonwealth is so high, to hold my client that they have to build all 12 units before the system is installed. This makes it uneconomic. Like, my client will walk from this project, nothing will get built, the drainage system won't get built, the units won't get built. And there's a lot of people that have been coming before the board in this matter, saying, we want this thing built correctly, but we want it built expeditiously. And to keep the project moving expeditiously, and to get a pathway forward so that this system is built, this is, we think, the best way to do it. It also totally covers what you want, to have funds in place, legitimate funds in place, to cover the cost to build the system. My client has one other ask, though. One unit has been built, has completed, and has been sold, is under agreement. And the, the nice woman who's bought this unit is currently living in a hotel, waiting to move in. The unit is 3D. We would ask that, as part of this condition, that the occupancy ish, permit issued for unit 3D only, while my client works to get the insurance bond in place. I spoke to my client, he said it could be done in approximately two weeks, to have that in place with you. There's still 11 more units to go, so the units are valued at approximately $700,000 each, so it's like over $8 million worth of real estate that's yet to be built. But for the sake of this woman literally living in a hotel, if an occupancy permit can be issued so that she can move in, it would be much appreciated. We would have the insurance bond to you, we could set the amount. Like I said, the amounts range from $234,000 to $297,000, get an insurance bond to the board in the next couple of weeks. You have what you want, you have the surety in place, so that if something happens to my client, the money is there for the system to be built out. My client gets to work and finishes project economically, and can get occupancy permits on a rolling basis for the units, because you have the bond in place. And then the system gets built at the end, and everybody wins, right? My client can continue to build the units, he can continue to run his business, and you have the insurance bond in place. So we'd ask that it be modified, so that certificates of occupancy be issued as the units, assuming the insurance bond is in place, for the amount that we agree on, that occupancy permits be issued on a rolling basis, as requested by my client, assuming the building department and Ken agrees. And that we get you the insurance bond within the next two weeks, and that unit 3D occupancy permit be issued ASAP, so this woman can move into her unit. So that is the first modification of the conditions that we've asked for. The second modification that we're asking for is a modification to condition 2A. And this condition in your, in the stormwater permit says, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, submit the following to the building department and planning department. A, results of a confirmatory groundwater inspection to be completed during construction, prior to installation of the drainage system, to confirm the designed groundwater elevation. In layperson's terms, essentially what this means is to do, to dig a big hole, like a 14-foot deep hole, to see if any groundwater is visualized at that level. That's the level that we're supposed to dig to, per the regulations for this project. The reason why we've asked that to be modified is, that is typically done at the end of the project, when you're putting the, the remaining parts of the system in. It creates a safety hazard for people who are working on site and who are hopefully moving into the site, to have a 14-foot hole there. And I believe, if you have my letter that I provided to the board, we provided with the foundations that have been dug, and for data to you guys, and for pictures, that show that we've already dug to the 20-foot depth on site and encountered no groundwater on the site. If you have that data, you can rest assured that we've already had those digs. And that we'd ask that this be modified, so we can do this at the end of the project, instead of during construction while we're doing it. It creates a safety issue, and likewise, I think you already have the data showing that there is no groundwater at 14 feet. We've gone well beyond that. So those are the two modifications that we're asking for, that that dig need not be done as a condition to get occupancy permits, and that the occupancy permits can be issued, provided that we provide a bond to the, insurance bond to the town, for an amount to be set based upon the quote that we gave you. With the one exception is that one unit, certificates of occupancy can be issued for that one unit 3D ASAP, so this, this lady can move in. I'm happy to answer any questions, like, just to reiterate, we want what you want. We want you to have the surety in place, but we need to be able to run our business and to make this project economic. Otherwise, as currently fashioned, the stormwater permit is, makes this project completely uneconomic, and, and it's not going to get built out. It's not going to get built out quickly. So I'm happy to answer questions if you have any questions.
Anybody from the board?
Yes. Would you explain to me, a non-engineer?
Sure.
Why the drainage system cannot be built when your foundation's going? Presumably, you have leaders and you have recharged basins, you have all the infrastructure. When you build your foundations, you bring the leaders up to the foundation or other areas that have to be drained.
Right.
And the building inspector determines, or consultant engineer concerns, determines that is a legitimate design and execution. And I don't understand why that is so burdensome upfront, when you pour the foundations.
Right.
It doesn't have, you don't have, it seems like that is something that can be phased in. I'll say something else, and that is, this board and other boards have a history of being burned by issuing certificates of occupancy, and then no one returns phone calls. You cannot get anything done. I understand what you're saying about your insurance bond, but your three, your three quotes don't even line up. There's one, your lowest quote appears to be missing stuff that is in other quotes. This is Greener Group. Everyone else has an additional catch basin. You've got two storm scepters, trench drain, niloplast, and Greener, the low, the lowest bid, has no catch basin listed. What were these bid from? I don't think this board has seen that document.
But they were all bid from the design plan from, and scope from existing grade, documentation from Merrill. And they all bid off those documents. So sometimes.
Is that available?
I'm sorry?
Is that available to the town, the town engineer, the building inspector, and maybe?
Yeah, it's exactly, it's exactly what your peer review engineer and my client's engineer.
Have you read on that? Sorry.
Yeah.
It's covered.
No problem. And to answer your first question, some of the drainage system can be built now, but what the condition requires is that my client submit an as-built plan to this board, showing the totality of the system built, before any occupancy permits are issued. So that's, that's not possible. The entire system cannot be built, and then a plan showing its installation, before all the units are finished. That's my understanding from talking to my engineer, and that's my experience, standard practice, building, building out these types of communities. So the entire system, according to your condition, would have to be built and installed, and an as-built plan submitted to you, and that necessarily includes the build-out of all 12 units, the completion of all 12 units.
That's where, that's where I don't quite get it. It seems to me that for $250,000, you can build the system up to the foundation walls, basically, and then link, and it's an operating system. It will take drainage, even though the uphill units will not contribute any drainage. That you want the first unit to get a certificate of occupancy, then the town engineer, the building inspector should be able to determine that any inputs from the roof of that first unit will be dealt with, not that that will go off into a dirt ditch somewhere until the last unit is, is built and you can afford to connect them all. Am I making sense?
No, respectfully. The unit is already built, so the water is already coming in, and it's already happening. So what I'm trying to explain to you is, your condition says the entire system has to be built out, and a plan memorializing about how it was installed has to be prepared, and that has to be provided to this board before a single occupancy permit for any of the 12 units be issued. And what I'm trying to explain is, that can't be done until all 12 units are built, because all the grading, everything has to be done on site, which necessarily includes all 12 units being finished. So once the, all 12 units are being finished, that is the time you, you do the final as-built, because that's the time the final touches of the drainage system are done, and then we give you the plan. To your point about the town being burned in the past, we're trying to mitigate that 100%. So if you want, take the highest quote that we gave you, $297,500. If you're concerned about what the low quote says, contractors aren't always the most artful in how they come up with their proposals, take the highest one. But we were asked by this board to get three quotes, and we got three, from licensed contractors. So take, if you're concerned about the low quote, take the highest one, so that you won't be burned. It's literally an insurance bond, so that if my client cuts and runs from a project that he's hoping to make money on, you have $300,000 or $297,500 in place to hire this contractor for his, or her quote, to build out the system. So you won't be burned. The way the town's really going to get burned is if they keep this, in my opinion, respectfully to you, if you keep this condition in place, this project's not going to get built. And as a result, the town's going to lose 12 units of housing, and the drainage system's not going to be installed at all. So we're trying to, to thread the needle here and say, what we understand this board is concerned about is getting a proper drainage system according to the design that's been approved by your peer review engineer. Done. We want that, too. If you think we're not going to do it, and you think we're not going to do it, we'll put up the money for it, so that if we leave, you have the money to do it, whenever you want. But we're not going to leave, because this is how, this is a profitable project for us if we can do it. Yeah.
Do you have a little question?
Good.
So, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So I appreciate that, I mean, we have to move forward on this. We absolutely have to. And before I personally make a decision, I want to hear what everyone else has to say. I'm probably leaning back. I want to hear, you know, this whole process. I do understand how that works. I'm, I'm okay with the first piece of it. The piece about the occupancy, and I, I understand, and I act, I feel for somebody living in a hotel. But honestly, this has been going on so long, I feel strongly that if it takes two weeks to get a bond, then maybe Mr. Heb should move faster, or move somebody faster to get a bond within a week if possible, or upgrade her hotel. I mean, but I feel strongly that we do not issue an occupancy permit until we have that bond in place.
Let me try my best, with great respect to you, to convince you off that position.
Okay, go ahead.
And give you, like, evidence and data to try and do that, rather than just my say-so.
Okay, fair enough.
So, I hear what you're saying, right? The project is worth over $8 million to my client, to sell all 12 units. Giving an occupancy permit for one unit while he works as fast as possible to get a insurance bond is not going to give my client some kind of windfall, where he's going to ride off into the sunset with a bag of money. But...
I don't think he is.
He's not.
I, I don't think that he is. That, that's absolutely not the point.
Yeah.
The point is, is that every step of the way, we have been fighting this. This has been going on forever. I walked on the project and had an attorney called on me, because I was looking around. So this is not a, oh, this is a great project. So you have to understand my concern. I've listened to these residents. I've, I've watched this for so long, being on this board. So honestly, you're never going to convince me.
Okay.
So, but thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from the board? Liz?
I'm a little bit confused about, so the as-built plan, I understand, you know, that, that you won't have a whole as-built plan, but portions of the drainage system will have to be built, right?
Right.
Because people will be living in them.
Right.
So are there progressive as-built plans that can be done? Like, could we see the as-built for the unit that you're, or is that just not done?
I don't even know how that would work, and I can't, I would venture to say that that's never been required in the history of this town, of any developer.
Well, you know what? Break new ground.
What?
I don't know.
Right, it makes sense. It makes sense, right?
I mean, I guess, I guess, I guess what I would say to that is, do you want people to develop property in this town? Because if, if, I mean, I have never encountered a system where a stormwater permit like this was required of a developer in this way. My client complied, did it. He, he helped fund for the engineering to do it. He's literally saying he's going to put the money up with the town for the entire system. It's not, it's an insurance bond. He doesn't have any control over it.
That's great.
So, so you continue this idea with respect to you, to add additional costs on top of it. Eventually, he's just going to walk away. I mean, like, we're literally saying, you will have an as-built plan with this entire system installed. It's not like my client doesn't want to build these units. He wants to build them as fast as possible to make his money.
You know what? I, I totally hear what you're saying. I'm just, you know, we've never had this kind of back and forth with someone. And I, as far as I know, I've been on the, the board for nine years. Other projects have happened. I don't know. I mean, is this particularly odd?
With respect, I think the back and forth here is, the back and forth has been complaints from people who live in town about drainage issues. I think we've gone through this by hiring outside experts.
Yeah.
To say, literally, the cause of some of the loudest complainants who have legitimate concerns, drainage issues, is the fact that Wildwood Lane is not, doesn't have a topcoat yet. And the reason why it doesn't have a topcoat, with great respect to this board, is because this is like the 10th hearing that we've had to listen to complaints from the public that have slowed down this project. Everything this board has asked of my client, we've done. Go out and get it, go out and do a peer review. No problem. Help fund the peer review. No problem. Have your engineer work with Merrill Engineer the peer review. Agree to build exactly whatever Merrill Engineer says. No problem. We want to put the topcoat on Wildwood Lane, so that water stops flowing down that. And you also have the independent peer review that you did about the rest of the whole project, which basically said topography for a lot of these people's homes is bad, and their drainage systems are, are bad, which has nothing to do with my client, nothing that he built. So with respect, I think there's a lot of volume here, not because my client did anything wrong, but because people are complaining of drainage issues that are inherent to their properties that my client never touched.
You know, I understand you're being defensive based on the history here, but I really just asked a question.
Yeah.
And you could have just said, no, that's not typically done, or that would raise the expense too much.
It would.
I'm just saying, you know, you'd probably be better off not acting as though, I'm some obstructionist. I'm just asking a question.
I'm sorry.
I'm not an engineer. I'm not a stormwater expert, so I just wanted to ask that question.
I apologize to you. I wasn't trying to, to be patronizing or disrespectful to you.
It's okay. I, I can sense that you're trying not to be. You don't have to talk more. It's okay.
Okay.
I get it.
Mr. Chairman, this is a, in the, in the bond, if we were to accept the bond, we're looking at taking the bond plus 15%. Is that typically 15 to 20, depending on, for any cost increases over time?
Right.
I just want to make sure we, we cover that.
Is there a time limit on how long before this gets completed? Does anything like that happen?
I was, I was wondering that, Tim, actually.
I don't think it can be, because you just, John?
I understand what you're facing. And my experience is that while you're building something like this, you have excavators, you have all kinds of, you don't have your grade, you don't have your, it's impossible to control the water on the site during construction the way it's designed to be controlled at the completion of the construction. So it's always a challenge. But it's a dirt site. There are low spots and high spots that will not be there at the end, that will be graded out. So my feeling is, the quicker you can complete this. And, and I personally feel that, you know, 2A is the same as asking about releasing one unit to a woman who's being put in a difficult position, so that they could be released, and have the bond, and have the final unit, and let's get it done and make sure it's working properly. That, we're just treading water every hearing, every hearing, every hearing.
I agree. I want to get it. I absolutely.
Hold on. One other time, folks.
Sorry.
Sorry. No, I was, I mean, despite what's gone on, I actually don't think this is a terrible solution.
Okay. Okay. Doc?
Yeah, Ms. Brown said it better than I did. And that is, why cannot? If you have to sell, if you want to close on a unit, you have to have a functioning drainage system. I think we're saying, the downstream infrastructure can be built when you connect to that one unit, this one's still a foundation, and you get an occupancy permit, you do an as-built for that part. Let's assume that the lower part is functioning, you do an as-built that links to what may be an approved system. When this unit is filled and sold, then there's an as-built for this section. I don't see the problem. And basically, you're asking us to give up our leverage.
So, if I understand what you're saying, that would require 13 separate as-built plans for this drainage system?
That's right. Piecemeals. Those are small bites.
That would add an incredible cost and delay to the project.
I don't buy it.
Well, with respect to this.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion? Yep. That we can modify Condition 3 for the as-built to accept a $300,000 bond with a 15 percent additional to cover future costs with a rolling release of occupancy permits and that we issue a occupancy permit for Unit 3D as approved by the town billing inspector.
Repeat it, please.
Word for word?
Just the intent.
To modify Condition 3 on the as-built and accept a $300,000 bond plus 15 percent and to have the rolling release of occupancy permits as, by the billing inspector and to release Unit 3D for an occupancy permit as approved by the billing inspector.
What about the other conditions? Anything on that?
Well, 2A?
2A.
I'm doing one at a time.
Yeah, can you do one at a time? I think that makes more sense.
Then I'll second that, because I know it'll open up some more discussion on that
particular. And I agree with you with the bond plus the 10 or 20 percent. But, there's still other occupancy permits down the road they're going to need. That's our leverage, I think. Until that one gets done, he's got money freed up to continue that, but we have other occupancy permits.
I just, to continue discussion, on that motion, we need a second.
I'll second your motion.
Motion made a second. On the motion alone, any other comments? John? I see you biting at the bullet.
Mr. Chairman.
No, I agree. You're all set?
Yeah.
Jim?
I was just going to add that a timeframe for the bond, like, the schedule for the project, like, how long is the bond going to be for? One year, two year?
May I speak? So, I talked to my client about that, Chris, before the hearing. I said, we need to get it as fast as possible. His hope is he can get it in a matter of days, but it could take up to two to three weeks, he said. He wants to get it as fast as possible. So, if you give him three weeks to get the bond, I think that will be sufficient time at the back end. But, my hope is, we get it to you this week.
That wasn't the question, though. That wasn't the question.
Oh, oh, how long you want, you tell me, what works for you?
What is his end schedule for the project?
A lot depends upon these moving parts. So, if you tell me how long you want the bond to be in place, let me know.
One year. One year. It's one year, yeah. That's what we've done in the past.
I would suggest longer.
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get the drainage issues corrected for the neighbors.
Quickly.
Yeah, I'm trying to expedite the whole project.
But, what if it's not done and the bond expires?
No, we'll take the bond and get it done.
Okay.
Take the bond, yeah.
All right.
Anybody else?
Or extend it, but I mean, I want to get it done.
Just one point of clarification. Before he, before the building occupancy is issued, Ken has to at least examine the drainage system and is that part of it? Part of the?
He's going to make sure it all works.
Okay.
Liz, I understand, I completely understand where you're coming from. I don't.
That's my, that's my concern. It's like, who is looking at the drainage in between?
I agree.
You know?
It'll be the building inspector.
Okay. As long as it's being looked at.
Catherine, yeah?
I agree, we should move forward with, you know, releasing the properties and not, you know, having all of the units done. But, I am very against releasing, I mean, releasing an occupancy permit without getting the bond. Seriously? I mean, it can't take, I've gotten bonds before. I know it doesn't take that long. I mean, I really think that we should wait on that and I feel very strongly about it. I mean, it's certainly up to the board's decision.
So, that would be the Unit 3D that council was requesting.
Right.
We'd not release that until we received the bond.
Correct.
Okay, so that would be one of the conditions. The other outstanding issue is 2A, which I think you talked about on that.
Do you want to take this motion to a vote?
Let me, let's figure out what we're doing with this. Because that was one of the, so, I think you were concerned about 2A, which was the groundwater inspection completed during the construction of the drainage system.
Correct.
And if it's a rolling inspection or a rolling design of the drainage system, we couldn't actually release that part of it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't get the problem. It's a 14-foot deep hole. You witness it. If there's no water in the bottom, sign off, fill in the hole. It's, the geotecs do that daily.
Right.
I don't get it. Fill in the hole. You get it witnessed and certified, fill in the hole. I don't understand why that's a problem.
Okay. Anybody else? Catherine?
Can I just ask a non-engineering question? I'm sorry, I have to go there, I have to understand this. Tell me about what happens if this isn't tested, if the holes are not dug and if water is not tested along the way. What's the potential at the very end?
Potential is that the groundwater discharge system doesn't work. The groundwater level is too high.
And to go back and fix it is way too costly.
You can't fix it, because that's the groundwater, I mean, you know, the water.
So, that's why you usually do an inspection of the groundwater level, so that makes sure that the system you've designed is actually going to work.
And the point?
And that's the norm.
Yep.
Well, the point is, the system at those depths are installed typically after the units are built. So, you visualize the groundwater depth at that moment, not when people are onsite building. So, it's going to get witnessed, it's just about the timing of when it happens. If it's a big deal for the board, that's fine. I was just trying to mitigate against a safety issue. That's why I asked for it. It's not that it's not going to get done. We've already showed you depths to 20 feet where there's no groundwater. And the depth that you dig for this is 14 feet.
Doc? I'm trying to put this together. I don't get this comment, the 14-foot hole. And it's just, it feeds into my paranoia about getting this done right. You said earlier tonight, and I see in our meeting notes, that it was promised that we'll address the finish coat on Wildwood Lane, make sure, I understand that it's not part of, I understand that it's not part of this.
We'll withdraw, we'll withdraw it. If you want us to dig a 14-foot hole right now.
Sure. I just want to give a little more background.
You're concerned?
If we're talking about the pavement on Wildwood Lane and you're saying it's presumably not part of 61, I think I saw in a lawsuit recently filed that it is your contention that basically everything except parcel 61 is the responsibility of the existing condominium association. So, I am worried about hearing a discussion in the future that adding the finish coat to Wildwood Lane is not your problem.
So.
I'm worried about that. And it infects my thinking.
Well, you shouldn't, with respect to you, Mr. O'Connor, we have already put up a bond with the town to cover the paving of that road. And my client, through me, his counsel, has said to this board that we intend to do it. And that's part of finishing that project. So.
I have to accept that.
Well, worst-case scenario, if we run away, you have a bond to do it. So, with respect.
We can move on.
Okay. And I will also say that I'm a trial lawyer and I litigate cases for a living. If everything that was said in a complaint in a lawsuit were deemed as true, I mean, there's two sides to every story.
I understand, yes.
So, no disrespect, but let's let that lawsuit play out on the merits and see what happens. So, if the board is concerned about this, in good faith, we'll withdraw it. We're not trying to pull a fast one. If that of a concern for the board and digging the 14-foot hole, you want that done now, withdraw that request.
It's only Condition 3 now, correct?
Yes.
Right.
Thank you.
Corinne?
I was in for the whole discussion, so I don't want to rehash things that might have already been talked about. Come on.
Okay, so, we have a motion from Mr. Dusset, seconded by Jim, that we accept a $300,000 bond plus 15 percent. It'll be a rolling release of the units with 3D to be released upon the bond being presented to the town within the 21 days. And the occupancy permit would be released after we receive that bond. And you're in agreement with that, Mr. Udi?
With respect, I'm not. My client would like the bond for Unit 3D, the occupancy permit to be released immediately, assuming Ken approves it, given that there is, in my humble opinion to you, zero risk for the town, because there are still 11 more units to be built out. My client is not making any money selling this, getting an occupancy permit for this one unit. He's just trying to accommodate this poor woman who's literally staying in a hotel. He's not making any money off this. He makes the money on the last few units that are going to be sold here. That's how developers make their money on this, on these projects. He's not making any profit off this one unit being sold. So, I'd ask for this, not for my client's sake, but for the sake of this woman, release it. We'll get the bond in place. We'll get it to you.
Unfortunately, Mr. Udi, I'm just going to say this.
Mr. Chairman?
I just, hold on to, I'm just going to say is, we have to look out for the benefit of the town and for the residents. I feel sorry for the poor woman. We went through this recently with another project in this town where the people were eight months before they got into the units. A lot of them lost a lot of money. That's not our concern. Our concern is to protect the town and the residents of the town going forward. So, any conditions that we set, I'm sorry.
Well, you asked me if I agree with that and I just gave you.
I understand, I understand. And Dan?
My motion was to release Unit 3D.
Yes.
It was seconded.
On, on the acceptance of the bond?
I didn't say that.
Okay. Would you like to make a?
No.
Okay.
My motion was made and seconded and I was going to amend the motion.
Any, somebody amend the motion?
Do you need to amend it for the timeframe that we discussed, or you don't want to do that?
The timeframe was one year, that's.
Okay. I didn't know if that was in the motion.
So.
Somebody like to amend the motion?
I would like to amend the motion. Let's see what it should say. I'm trying to find the right one. I'd like to revise the motion so that we do not release the occupancy permit prior to receiving the bond.
Okay, Unit 3D. Not releasing Unit 3D.
Correct.
Okay. Do you hear a second on that amendment to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On the amended motion, roll call, though. Corinne?
I'm staying.
I'm staying. Dan?
No.
Yes.
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 No.
Amanda?
Yes.
So, the amended motion passes. Going back to the original motion?
As amended.
As amended. Any further discussion from the board? From the audience? Sir, come up to the lectern, please. Mr. Frost, as I recall, am I right?
Excuse me?
Your name?
Robert Rand.
Rand, sorry.
Not Mr. Frost.
I was trying to get all of them.
I still have a little more here than Mr. Frost does.
Okay.
Robert Rand, 9B Wildwood Lane, and I'm a member of the Ocean Pines Condominium Association Board of Trustees. First, I just wanted to say, if there are sound and valid engineering justifications for granting the modifications that Mr. Hebb seeks, they should be allowed. But, I'm no hydrogeologist or engineer, and as you all said at a recent meeting, neither are you. Although, I think Mr. O'Connor knows a lot more about this matter than I do, judging from what his recent comments were just now. Therefore, we believe that the planning board should seek such engineering expertise before making any decisions, perhaps from Merrill Engineers and land surveyors which conducted the peer review of Lot 61. Furthermore, we believe that Mr. Hebb should bear the cost of any such consultations with the engineers, as he's the one seeking the modifications. At your last meeting, Mr. Farrell, you said the peer review by J.C. Engineering of the adjacent Ocean Pines lots, developed by Mr. Hebb, was expensive and paid for by the town. We believe the town and its taxpayers have therefore paid enough for Mr. Hebb's development efforts. Second, in his letter seeking the modifications, Mr. Udi cited Mr. Hebb's financial constraints as a reason to grant the modifications. As I said earlier, if there are sound engineering reasons to do so, fine. But, Mr. Hebb's financial conditions should be irrelevant to your considerations and should not factor into the board's decision to rescind some of the conditions it imposed just a month ago. His poor financial planning is his concern, not the town's or the planning board's. By the way, just want to mention, this isn't the first time that Mr. Hebb has sought modifications from the town to accommodate his financial conditions. According to the Cape Cod Times, in 2014, Mr. Hebb sought to reduce the number of affordable housing units that he had agreed to provide in Pilgrim Pines Estates, citing his finances. The Times reported at the time that Mr. Hebb claimed to the zoning board that unless the number of affordable units was cut drastically to only two, he would not have the money to finish building the roads in that project. Third, I also wanted to mention that I still cannot find Mr. Hebb's notice of intent to file a stormwater construction permit application with the EPA. And as of a week ago, neither could an EPA official whom I suggested that Ms. Copeland contact. Just a reminder, at its July 25 meeting, the board, in accepting the Merrill peer review of Lot 61, said that such a filing was needed before granting occupancy permits for the Lot 61 units. This is the EPA permit. That was something that Merrill recommended in its report and that the board accepted. Finally, just as a footnote, it seems that the planning board would want to know if the EPA has actually reviewed and approved such a permit from Mr. Heb before allowing occupancy permits to be issued, not just if the permit had been applied for. We think it's important for the board to know if Mr. Heb's application passes muster with the EPA before the occupancy permits are issued. So I just wanted to remind you all of that, and with that, I'll sit down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rand. Anybody else from the audience? Tom LeClaire?
Tom LeClaire, 7L Pine Circle. Listening to this whole event this evening obviously has me concerned as well. You know, issuing certificates of occupancy as they go along is going to, and I'm, again, not an engineer either, maybe someone can clarify this for me, but they're going to be putting parking lots in asphalt in there. So if they have to dig it up again, is he going to incur more costs by double digging? First of all, that's my one question. Secondly, you know, again, Mr. Heb's financial problems isn't really our, we shouldn't brunt the bear of it, nor should you. It's something that he probably should have planned for. And if Mr. Rand, what Mr. Rand said about the EPA and everything, this is something that probably should have been in place at the time that they even started digging a hole up there or even doing any kind of excavating. So, again, I'm not saying he's not a smart businessman because he's obviously been in business for a long time, but usually people that have big investments like this plan ahead and probably set money aside for certain things like this. Now, I understand it's a large sum of money, but, you know, we also incur problems down at our house where we have to do our own thing. We're not asking for forgiveness like this in special modifications of any kind. But it just seems a little ironic and a little crazy that this is being allowed. Now, my wife and I, we actually sent a letter to the town as well, dated August 15th, after the board meeting last time too. And when Mr. Udi expressed his request for modifications and sent that letter out to the town, we said this to the town, and I'm not sure if everyone else got the opportunity to see the email, but we said, "We want to formally express our opinion that we firmly against the modifications and urge the board of, the planning board to stand firm and against the request as well. We also have endured financial hardship due to stormwater runoff from Wildwood Lane and have been patiently waiting for the town to process to play out. We've been waiting almost a year for this as well." And I, again, we're not spinning around saying, "Can you release certain things so we can, we can make money, so we can pay for our bills?" I don't think the developer's financial issues should have any impact on decisions made by the town to hold certificates of occupancy until the drainage issues are corrected. It should be the developer's responsibility to correct actions that should have been in place from the start. We are concerned that if the developer starts selling all these units except for 18A, it makes it easier for him to walk away from the project. I think a lot of us feel the same way about this. And 18A is just a dent in that operation right now. I think if you release, keep releasing 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, and eventually 11 of the 12, yeah, we personally believe that this is going to be an abandonment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeClaire. Anybody else from the audience? Here's Mr. Frost.
Craig Frost, 17 Ocean Pines Drive. So, I'm not an engineer, none of us, most of us here aren't, but I couldn't help but notice driving by on my way here, when I pulled out of my driveway, that the catch area they have for drainage, the temporary catch area they have for drainage now, has water in it. It hasn't rained in five days, but the water that did come in hasn't dissipated yet. They're going to add more buildings, more asphalt, and from what I can see from the plan that they have, they're going to put six or eight catch basins, I'm not sure how big they are, into the ground at the bottom of the hill and expect to catch and dissipate all of the water that comes off of that lot. And right now, as we speak, I don't believe it's rained in four or five days, there's still water sitting there. There's water there all the time, in that hole where they have the pipe going underneath the temporary drive. It never goes away. What's going to happen when more water goes there and they try and catch all of it? I don't get it.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. Anybody else from the audience? Mr. LeClaire, you got another one?
Tom LeClaire, 7L Pine Circle, I'm sorry, I forgot to bring this up in my last rant. We had asked for the last two meetings to have silt socks set up on Wildwood Lane, up Wildwood Lane, across from 5 and 6, and anywhere further beyond that. Currently, there are only two silt socks at the end of Wildwood Lane. And, you know, again, we're nervous every rainstorm. And I'm 95% convinced the reason why the silt socks aren't there because it's going to show the true testament of that detention pond behind 12. And watching the catch basins and watching the pitch of the road at every rainstorm, it's bypassing those basins. It's bypassing the basins up by nine, it's bypassing the basins by five, and it's going down to the basins that are intersecting with Wildwood Lane and Ocean Pines Drive. Now, if I understand it correctly now, because of J.C. Engineering's review, those catch basins go directly down to the catch basins or detention ponds off of State Road. So, I believe the builder is using that as his primary detention pond. And he's literally trying to just pull the wool over our eyes with the detention pond that is up there between 12 and, I think it's eight. So if the silt socks are put in place there, we would have a little more ease of mind knowing that it may not jump the road at Ocean Pines and down the curb of 15 down to us. It'll at least detain some of the water up there, not all of it, but it'll detain more of it. And it'll also throw the true testament of what that catch basin is capable of doing.
Thank you. Understood, thank you. I do have to say that I have not been up there since our last meeting. But many of you know I've been up there a number of times, so. I did talk to the inspector of buildings, Mr. Murphy, and he said that he was, he did go up there and there were silt socks in place. I don't recall our entire conversation, but he did say that after our last meeting that he did check and there were silt socks in place. Whether there are enough of them in the right places, I don't know. Okay. Doc?
Mr. Chairman. Counsel, I wish your client could show some goodwill. Now, I'm just going to take Mr. LeClaire's point that there are no silt socks except where it intersects with Ocean Pines. It's not hard to put silt socks. It's not hard to file, that was a key point Mr. Rand made about filing with the EPA. Why hasn't it been filed?
So with respect to the EPA, I just confirmed my client over text. And the application to the EPA has been filed weeks ago. They have the application. My client spoke with the EPA today, and they're going to be issuing their approval any day now. So it's been filed, it's been done. I don't know what Mr. Rand's issue with it, or he couldn't find it, or the person that he spoke to couldn't find it, but the application has been made, and it should be coming any day now.
Okay, just a couple of gestures of goodwill. Do the silt socks. Is that hard?
I just, I did talk with Jen, and she's reiterated what I had talked to Ken Murphy about, and he said there were a ton of silt socks up there. So.
I'll take your word for it.
I'm just, I have to go by what our town officials say. You probably are going to disagree, that's fine, but I'm just telling you what we heard from our inspector.
And just to speak to the goodwill, my client's built almost 300 units in this town, has a good reputation as a builder in this town. He's built affordable housing in this town. With respect, every time this board has asked my client to do something as far as engaging, paying for peer review engineering, he's done it. He wants to build this project the right way, and he's been sued. I'm not, we'll see what the merits of that lawsuit is, but he's taken hits right and left from what's going on here. And a lot of what has been alleged against him was dispelled by the recent J.C. engineering report that came out, which literally said, and I'm paraphrasing, that the vast majority of the drainage issues that others that are not in this condominium complex are receiving are not due to this development. It's due to, the only part of this development that's contributing to it is that Wildwood Lane needs to be finished. And why isn't Wildwood Lane finished? It's because Lot 61 hasn't been completed. Why hasn't Lot 61 been completed? Because we've been taking hits from the public with many allegations with respect that have not been turned out to be true based upon the engineering. And we've literally come up with a drainage plan for Lot 61 where this town's peer review engineer has approved and says essentially, "Not a drop of water is going to leave Lot 61." So, I don't see how there can be a better outcome in this situation from what my client is trying to do than what he's trying to do. It suggests that he's not engaging in goodwill or doing what he needs to be doing. Like, he's taken a lot of allegations here that, you know, have not been proved true by licensed professional engineers. So, if there's another silt sock that we can add, we added tons of silt socks for what the chairman just said. If there's another place that you would like a silt sock, or the town planner, if you want to tell us that there's another location that we need to do it, or that Ken says we need to put it in, happy to take that into consideration and help. We've already done a lot of that, but this is not some like evil Darth Vader guy, you know, trying to spread water all over the town. He's trying to build this project and do it right per engineering. So I just, you know, the goodwill should go both ways. He's, I'm sitting here tonight trying to work with you to do what needs to be done. So, there's no animosity here. We want to get it done right and do it. And just because someone complains about something doesn't mean it's my client's fault and it needs to be borne out by engineering. And we've done that, and we've seen that. Many of these complaints, with respect to the people who are suffering and having problems, aren't due to what my client has done. It has nothing to do with him.
Can you confirm something for me? Because Mr. Rand confused me. You did indicate when you proposed condition three that you worked with the engineers to create the plan that works based on the peer review information, correct? So this, so there's, it's not, I don't think it's a situation where there's no collaboration going on or no modification of the plan based on new information that we've received.
No, totally, you're absolutely right. When an issue was raised with the drainage on Lot 61, the board suggested that a peer review be retained. We agree with it. We had our engineer work with the peer review engineer and meet every single thing that that peer review engineer asked us to do so that when he reported to the board at the last hearing, he literally told you, "The developer has met all my concerns, done everything that I've asked him to do, and the plan reflects that. We're going to build out the system according to what Merrill said."
Okay.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to confirm that, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anybody else from the board? Okay, we have a main motion. As amended.
amended motion, yeah.
As amended. Any further discussions from the board on that motion as amended? Anybody? I make a suggestion that we further amend it. That we are waiting for the EPA stormwater permit to be filed with the town prior to these conditions going into place.
Second with the board.
I think that will clarify everything that our peer reviewer said, what Mr. Heb's engineers have said and everything else, that the EPA confirms that they're in approval with plans that have been submitted. So I would suggest that motion be put into play. And I think that's protect the town, protect the residents, and everybody else, so. And if that has been applied for and it's due any time now, that shouldn't.
We're just waiting on the EPA.
And that shouldn't interfere too much with the, say, up to 21 days to get the bond into us. We should have that permit hopefully by that time.
So with respect, my client tells me that we applied six weeks ago, and he literally is calling these people every day, called them today, and they say, "Any day you should have it, the approval from the EPA." I mean, with great respect, putting my client at the mercy of the EPA while this woman sits in a hotel, if we give you guys a bond, it's just.
Again, Mr. Udi, it's not about the woman and the hotel. It's about protecting, our job is to protect the town.
Right.
Everybody. So, we need to have that permit in place, I think, before anything else is done because that protects us and protects the town. Because if all the engineers have said that the stormwater is going to work, if the EPA says, "Nope, it's not going to work," then we've got to start over again. But if they say it's going to work, then we go forward.
Is the town not protected by your peer review engineer saying that it works?
It is to somewhat, but what happens if the EPA says, "Nah, we don't believe what the other engineers have said." The EPA comes out and says, "No"?
Well, it was suggested in the peer review that we make sure that that happens.
That it was applied for.
Right, so I would.
And we did apply.
I'd ask somebody to make that motion, that we wait until we have the EPA report before anything else is done.
So moved.
Moved, do I hear a second? Discussion?
I'll second it.
You'll second it? Discussion on it?
What if the EPA takes?
Somebody on Zoom had something to say, guys.
Okay, I see the hand up. Okay, John, go ahead and finish.
What if the EPA takes months? Take months.
Well, then water's going to keep falling off Lot 61 of these people's properties. How does that protect the town?
I think the protection for the town is to get it done. And I think that the submission of an EPA stormwater permit generally has already been vetted, and it's a formality.
That's correct.
Well, well said, John. Okay, we have a hand icon on Zoom Station Studio, whatever, Station 5? You want to go ahead with your comment?
Yes, I typed up a few words, I'm not sure how many are valid at this point because of all the other people that have stood up, but.
Can we have your name? Can we have your name for the record, please?
Yes, it's Elizabeth Harrington. I live at 6C Wildwood Lane.
Okay, thank you.
And really, what I wanted to talk about was the same thing that you mentioned two weeks ago at the meeting about you being laypeople. All of us here living at this development are laypeople as well. And I'd like to speak frankly, it was common sense because it is the complicity of all of these reports and the engineering, and it's complicated. And the simple fact is that most of us gave up our homes of many years to move here and retire here, never thinking that we were going to be defrauded. There are 32 units, unit owners at Ocean Pines. However, we all purchased with a 48-unit development condo. The sign still reads this way as you enter the property, that there would be 48 units. Banks gave mortgages to owners with this understanding, agreeing to loan money on a 48-unit project that could sustain itself. Now it's 32 units and a separate 16 units that are supposed to be independent but depend on us for their sprinkler system? Again, this is all just simple, straightforward, common sense information. We were all delayed in getting into our units. The head builders took almost a year to complete from the time of non-refundable deposit. Many of us were homeless and living in hotels, creating very high bills. Heb never rushed and never started another lot, he called them lots or set of buildings, until he finished the current ones. Now, Heb Builders is rushing this project at Lot 61, and you need to ask yourselves why. He has renamed this project, these 16 units, according to his lawyer, Udi. He's rushing them, and his lawyer says that this is done all the time, that they separate and rename a phase of a project. But it's only done when the next phase can be independent of the other phases. This is not the case. They don't, like I said, they don't even have their own sprinkler system. This practice was deceptive to us and to the banks and to you. You issued a permit based on 48 units at, called Ocean Pines Condominium Association. Since we have been before you many times with this ongoing issue at Ocean Pines, Heb Builders knows everyone is watching him. They actually put in a normal-sized septic system recently on these new units, not the mini ones that he put in for the rest of us living here. They put in an obvious base coat on the, for the recent laptop that was just put down, along with berms, actual berms, which we have none of. We were told that we could only have two bedrooms in all of these units because that was what you approved the planning board because that's what the septic system would allow for based on the lot size and so on. But throughout this property, there are three bedroom units in place. How does this get approved by the building inspector? Also, some of these most recent units that we're talking about on Lot 61, according to the plans that we saw, that you issued permits for one bedrooms on the plan, but yet they are advertising them as two bedrooms. Just go to the condo bankers and see that he is selling these units as two bedrooms. Again, just simple, straightforward, no complicity here, no reports or engineers required. Maybe you guys changed the permits and gave permission to make them two bedrooms, and I am completely wrong. Some of you said that you have been up to the project, and you've said it again tonight, but not very recently. If that's the case, you can see with your own eyes that Heb Builders never installed a top coat for any of our driveways on our property. No berms, no top coat, just the rough base coat that we've all seen put down when they're doing a street sale or they're doing the highway before the smooth coat goes on. So we have cracks everywhere, weeds growing everywhere through all these cracks. You just go out there and you sweep the driveway with just a little house broom, not a big broom, and the driveway crumbles and comes up with a broom. And Heb's lawyer wonders about this lawsuit and his upstanding client. He has lied and deceived us on numerous occasions. And Mr. Udi just said that this, these meetings and all of these, these are delaying and slowing down the project, and that's to the contrary. He has his foot on that gas pedal and he's flooring it. And again, ask yourselves why. He changed our condo docs before he even started building Lot 61. He recorded them with the registry of deeds and never told anyone here so that he could maintain power over us, maintain control without turning over the association that was supposed to be, according to our condo docs, and you can get access to those as well. They were supposed to be turned over to us in 2020. This was finally relinquished by him in 2023. I'm just pointing these things out because they are obvious, common sense issues that speak to the character of Heb Builders.
All right, we're talking about Lot 61, so I feel sorry for you about those other issues, but right now we're just concentrating on Lot 61 and those issues.
I, and I had a feeling you might say. I had a feeling you might say that, but I think it has a lot to say about the builder and the entirety of the project.
And if I may, I don't think we should be litigating these in a public hearing before the planning board. There's a lawsuit that's been filed about this. We disagree with respectfully everything that woman said, and we'll litigate that issue.
That's why we're calling that to a close. Okay, on the main motion, any further comments? The board?
Could we review the motion where we are before we vote?
Dan, do you remember your main motion plus the amendment?
Yeah, weren't you just amending it something?
Well, I started to talk about requesting if somebody wanted to amend it for the EPA report, but nobody seemed to-
You had a second. You have to withdraw.
Okay. Okay, I didn't make the motion, but I suggested the motion.
I think Doc-
Doc made the motion, you had seconded it, so Doc would withdraw.
I don't see a reason to withdraw.
Okay.
Just if I may, the reason would be, we all want this drainage system built on Lot 61. We want it to be done. We have applied to the EPA pursuant to what Mr. Dugan said, I believe it was discussed at the last hearing, that you, what the engineer suggested from the peer review from the town is that we apply. We have applied. We've done it. We're just waiting for them to do it. It is a formality. If you have a peer review done who understands all the standards that these systems are supposed to be built to, it is a formality. You just need to get the piece of paper back from the EPA. If you want the system built and you want it done expeditiously, let us start doing it. We're waiting on the EPA. We hope to get this any day, but I don't know what some bureaucrat at the EPA is going to do or how long it's going to take. That's the issue. But we did apply.
Mr. DuSette?
We all know the speed of the town, and we all know how, the speed of the state. I'm trying to get the stormwater into the ground as quickly as possible.
Exactly. Mr. Frost? With less air than this.
Hey, hey, I resemble that.
That was my, that was his-
Eric Frost, 17 Ocean Pines Drive. So this EPA permit, can I ask, is that something that should be in place already?
Should be, but as Mr. DuSette just said-
So what came first, the chicken or the egg? Why isn't it in place? There's 32 units that are up, more than 32 units, and it should have been done before Unit 1 was built, but it's not. Doesn't anyone see that as a problem? I mean, really? We're two-thirds of the way through the development and we're stepping back to step one. Why? Why wasn't it done three, four, five years ago?
Mr. Udi.
It's because the town recently decided to impose the condition on my client to do a stormwater permit for this, which is not typical for these projects. You guys haven't typically done that. So that triggers this application to the EPA. So when we did that, we applied. That's why. It's not, you don't do it, doesn't matter. Of course, you do it when the town issues, says you have to do a stormwater and drainage permit, which is not something, this is kind of a first that we've seen for this board to do that. But given the acrimony here and the back and forth, I think that's why you imposed that condition on my client. So when that condition was imposed, we applied. That, it's not something that we neglected. We did it following your decision to have us go through this permit process.
Just so I understand, it's not something that's required before the development gets started?
It's required when you do the stormwater permit process.
When we ask for a stormwater plan, I think that's-
Right.
It's no stormwater.
And that's not always done. And that's, so when that-
It's not always done.
But the town does not always require that of builders. So when that was required of us, we applied, and then we went through the peer review process with Merrill, and we agreed to do what Merrill said. That's why it happened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doc?
More than one person has said the EPA permit is just a formality. Is anyone willing to warrant that they will deny the permit? What I'm saying is, is there zero chance that they will deny the permit?
If the EPA denies the permit, then what will necessarily-
The project's delayed anyway.
Then what will necessarily flow for that is that we have to come back with Merrill and do whatever the EPA needs us to do so that the project can happen, right?
So any work you do before that hypothetical denial is lost work.
If the, but it may not be. Look, it is a formality in my experience, but if the EPA comes in and says, "You need to tweak this and do four other things," well, then we need to do it to get this board's approval. We're still putting up the bond in place, and I'll be, and if the EPA requires something that changes the amount of the bond, we can come back in here and have that discussion and increase the bond if that's an issue. So the town is covered.
Did you, Corinne?
I was trying to not get in this conversation, because I haven't been here, but I know this project, it's, this project's been going on since I started working for the town of Born, and I was quite involved in it. And from what I'm understanding, and Jen could correct me if I'm wrong, the reason the permit was not put in place is because this project was actually preceded the stormwater rules and regulations. So it was determined at that time that it was not subject to it, so the building went on. The question always stood out, is Lot 61 subject to it? And from what I'm understanding, town council said that it was subject to it. So that's why there was no stormwater permit. So that's why it looks like it's, you know, everybody made a mistake. Well, they weren't subject to it, because this, this has been going on for years. So now that they're subject to it, it, that's what the delay is. So, you know, it didn't get missed, it just was, you know, it just preceded the regulations, and the town adopted new stormwater regulations, which now it's subject to, it's also subject to the EPA stormwater. So that's the-
That's right.
And that was, that was, you remember when we did that? I'm trying to remember. I remember we had the vote at town meeting to accept us. I'm going to have, go ahead, one of-
Hi, Robert Rand, again, just because I seem to be the one who brought up this whole thing with the EPA permit. When this was first mentioned in the Merrill review, I started looking into, has this been filed for? I contacted a woman at the EPA. She said it had not. Subsequently, she also gave me the link to the search engine for the EPA to see where these permits are applied for. I've been looking there just about every day, and I have not found it. I've been in contact with her, Michelle Voto, I think her name is, several times. She hasn't been able to find it. I'm just going by what I can do to try to find this permit. I gave Jennifer Copeland the email address for this EPA person. If it's been filed, fine. I just haven't been able to find it, and this person with the EPA hasn't been able to find it either. So just wanted to say that.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Rand.
I feel like we have to move forward, and I, you know, we, we have to work with both sides, all right? And I, I want to move this forward. Can we, I understand, can we verify that it's been filed and then just move on and not wait for the EPA? Because based on what Corinne said, that does make sense, but we asked for the bond, but not the-
Well, we could pen, pending verification. I don't know how you do that. They don't give you like a receipt or anything, you know? I mean, I don't know, like a number on your application or something?
Is that somebody that, you know what I mean?
Call the R and B and see if we get an answer. Good luck.
Okay. We do have something here, but they put it in font number two, I think, because I can't read the damn thing.
Oh, is it on here somewhere? I'm really good at reading small.
It has been filed.
It has been filed with the EPA, and I believe-
Then I'm good with that.
And can we move forward and just-
I'm looking at prepare information existing grade. I'm just looking to see if there's a date on here, but I don't-
What's worth, my client said he filed six weeks ago.
But we have a document that it was-
Project start date, January 1st, 2024.
That would be more than six weeks.
Instructions built before 1980? No.
And I can ask Patty to put on the website.
Yeah, I need to, need a magnifying glass. But anyhow, it has been filed, so we're waiting for them. So it looks like it was uploaded to the database on July 10th of 2024. And as for Wildwood Lane, includes aerial photo, endangered species, et cetera, et cetera. So it was filed somewhere July 10th, according to this. So Jen has that to file? Okay, back to the motion, the main motion. Did you want to say anything, Mr. Udi?
No, thank you.
I don't even know where we are with it.
We still have your amendment.
Yeah, we have your amendments.
My amendment was to wait for the EPA filing before we release anything, and-
Yeah, Doc made it.
Doc made the motion. I suggested it, but, and you seconded it?
Right.
Okay. Okay. So what we're going to do on the amended part, on that motion, on the amendment that we wait for the EPA permit, on that, Corinne.
The amendment is to wait for the permit?
Wait for the permit before we-
To wait for approval, final approval.
Final approval with the rolling release of lots of properties, and they are going to do a confirmatory groundwater.
So the things that are pending right now is the permit, the EPA permit, performance bond, is that-
The performance bond?
Oh, this is just the amendment?
No, I know the amendment, but I'm just trying to clarify the whole, the whole thing.
So it's EPA permit, then it goes back to the performance bond prior to the release of that Unit 3D.
Do we have to vote on that amendment?
On the first, on the main, the amendment, yes.
So the vote you're asking for now is whether or not to wait until the EPA?
Exactly. That's the amendment.
So yes is for wait to the EPA, no is not to wait.
I say yes.
So with Corinne, yes. Dan, no.
No.
Yes.
Oh, what was that?
No.
No?
No.
No.
Amanda?
Amanda?
No.
Thank you. Okay, so now we go back to the main motion.
Need a scorecard.
Uh, yeah, it's, this has been convoluted, so. The main motion is that we accept the bond, $300,000 plus 15%, the release of Unit 3D, and that motion was made by Dan, seconded by Jim.
And the bond for one year.
And the bond is to be held for one year.
Does that include the rolling release of the bylaw to the permit?
Yeah.
And is that amended not to release?
Not to release because of the EPA.
Not to release, no, it's not to, we're not going to release a unit until we receive the bond.
Correct.
Receive the bond and the EPA permit.
No.
The EPA permit afterwards. That's all, that's all, sorry.
Just the bond.
Yeah, see, I may have been confused.
And the 3D.
Okay. On that motion, Corinne? She's deer in the headlights.
Yes, yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Hell, no. Yes.
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 Amanda?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Mr. Udi. We look forward to hearing from Mr. Heb within, I would say, 21 days, probably, at the most. Hopefully it'd be quicker, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We just need to get this done. Are we going right to the zoning? Or we have one more?
I'm wearing my sleep sweater.
So we did that. Application for site plan review special permit, 328 Main Street. I understand they asked for a continuance?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, they have, they asked to continue to September 12.
Motion to continue to September 12.
Second. I should have-
Made by Dan, seconded by Liz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, we've got to do a roll call. Amanda? Amanda?
Yes, sorry.
Okay. John, yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Snap. Application, special permit 05, 2024, 345 Old Plymouth Road. I understand they've also asked for a continuance, so withdraw without prejudice?
That is correct. The applicant received comments from the fire department that the building would have to be sprinklered.
Okay.
And so it was not financially feasible for him, so he's going to look into other options.
So right now it's a withdrawal, or it's just-
Yes. Withdrawal without prejudice.
Withdrawal without prejudice?
Is he withdrawing that? I live next door.
Oh, okay.
Right.
And there's somebody in that unit that they want to make a residential all the time.
Okay.
I just came here to make sure it wasn't rented out.
We'll let the inspector of buildings know that somebody's living there. Thank you.
Maybe not 100%, but a lot.
Okay.
Yep.
Can she state her name for the record?
Yeah, could you get your name, please, for the rec-
Wendy Cushing.
Wendy, thank you very much.
I lived next door, 341 Old Plymouth, for 32 years.
So you know the neighborhood?
Yeah.
So on the request for withdrawal without prejudice, roll call, Corinne?
Need a motion on that?
No. You have a motion.
We'll, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to accept the, make a motion to accept their motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second?
Second.
Second from John. Any other questions? No. Okay. Now we'll go to a roll call. Corinne?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Amanda?
Yes, sorry, I'm having trouble with my new button.
No. That's like you're having trouble with the kid. Okay. Okay, public hearing for a change to the zoning bylaw to see if the town will vote to amend the Bourne zoning bylaw as follows, or to take any action in relation thereto. One, it's a downtown district sign regulations, amend sections 2880 in the downtown district sign regulations, section 2881, general downtown district sign regulations, section 2882, non-conforming signs, section 2883, sign construction and maintenance, section 2884, multi-tenant projects, section 2885, permanent signs, section 2886, special signs, 2887, temporary signs, and section 2888, signs not permitted. You ready?
I am ready. I'm going to go pull up the share screen, and Doc will summarize everything.
And Jen, while you're doing that, Amanda said that the camera doesn't point, it's pointing at the wall. Can we, the zoom camera?
I can't, I-
There's nothing we can do? I'm just going to-
She just turned the computer screen.
I can adjust it. No, no, the camera's on the wall. I can't reach that. I'm not tall enough to do that.
Okay, well, we probably should bring it up to somebody.
The tallest guy's in here.
Yeah.
You guys, the tallest guy's in here.
Well, I'm not going to be involved.
Is it that one?
Is it that one right there? I can try to adjust it this way.
On the lady thing from when I had my hips down, my socks.
Yeah, no, it's-
Is that it up there?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Dan's going to hit it with a stick. How's that, Amanda?
There we go. Thank you.
There you go, okay.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't see. Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't see your message you sent.
No, it's okay. I just use my imagination. It's fine.
I know you have a very rich and vivid imagination, so.
What's the IT rate?
I'll bet it was Heb that moved that. Anything else? We're still live. Well, Jen's pulling that up.
I can make some gentle-
I suggested to the board members not too long ago that they start looking at our bylaws. I think some of them need to be amended, and a lot of those are going to be directly into the downtown district. Some of those, when Corinne and I put it all together and the board put it together a long time ago, some of those need to be looked at. So I know, Jim, you told me, you checked, you and I had a conversation on the phone that you've been looking at it, so just suggesting to everybody else, yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Jen, when you're ready.
I can, I can give a commentary. This started, notwithstanding everything you said, Mr. Chairman, this started in the DRC a couple of years ago, and the group has This started, notwithstanding everything you said, Mr. Chairman, this started in the DRC a couple of years ago, and the group has put in a lot of effort on it. We started by saying, a lot of people don't get sign permits, willfully or just in ignorance, and we thought that we would try and rearrange at least the first part to make people understand the need for a sign permit, and that there were penalties involved if they didn't. So with that in mind, we pulled out some issues that were better put later in the document, and the first part, general downtown sign regulations are basically procedural. The way this works is, anything that is struck through is dropped, is, we're recommending to be dropped, anything involved and underlined is new language. So the first is to make people aware that they need a sign, and that failure to obtain a permit will make them, make the sign illegal and make them subject to the penalties outlined in section 1270 of the bylaw. Next two paragraphs unchanged. The next paragraph, D, 2881D, no sign shall be located over town property, we thought that was better put elsewhere, that is not a general sign rig, that's more or less a, kind of a specific placement rig. No sign attached to tree, pole, utility, strike. Sign shall not flash, blink, or fluctuate, strike. At the bottom of non-conforming signs, lawfully pre-existing signs that do not conform to the requirements of this section may be maintained, but may not be enlarged, redesigned, rebuilt, repaired, altered in any way except to conform with the requirements of the bylaw. That's the deal with the question of, well, I'm only repainting it, I'm only, I'm only changing the letters, I'm making a change, makes it subject to the sign bylaw. Sign construction, sign in addition to the supporting structure shall be properly maintained. 2883D. In the opinion of the building inspector, any sign that is dangerous, unsafe, in any manner, this is enforcement, any manner whatsoever, any sign erected herein, hereafter, contrary to the provisions of the bylaw, shall be repaired, made safe, in conformity with the bylaw, shall be removed by the owner, lessor, agent, or occupant of the building, property, or land upon which it is placed, or to which it is attached, the building inspector shall serve written notice to the owner, agent, person, having control of said sign, informing them how the situation must be created, corrected, and that the sign must be removed within time stipulated by the building inspector. The maximum time allowed by the building inspector for repair, removal shall not exceed 30 days after the receipt of such notion. No changes to multi-tenant projects.
Excuse me, Doc.
Yes.
Back on, I, I was waiting for you to pause, and I guess I missed, missed my, I'll put here. On the back on, when you crossed out sign shall not flash, blink, or fluctuate?
Right.
Is that being relocated, or just totally?
Relocated, maybe rephrased, but it's moved to another section. It's sort of a technical aspect of the sign permit, and we thought we'd gather them all together. We clarified, the existing language said frontage, and there's a big difference between lot frontage and building frontage, we defined it as building frontage. No changes on page four. Page five, this is 2885, permanent signs. A. Sorry, sorry. Number three, commercial uses on the second floor of any multi-story building. We realized that we did not deal, in the future, we may have three-story buildings, and it was a little vague on that. So we, one sign is permitted per framed, per delete, per framed window area, because that was a little bit vague. Cannot exceed 50, 15% of the total second-floor building frontage glass area, no window signs permitted above the second floor. That one's a little technical. 15% of your window space on your office. So presumably, let's just say, second floor is, is an accountant, a lawyer, a dentist. It's not the whole building frontage, it's.
The part that they occupy.
No, it's not. 15% of the total second-floor building frontage glass.
I could see where that might be difficult.
If it's, if it's their own window, 15%, I'm not sure it'd be visible from the street.
It wouldn't, and also if you had several offices on the second floor or third floor.
Right.
Or small windows.
They might not have anything on the front, so then you'd have to figure out a different way to do that, whether it be a.
Something at the door.
Message board at the door, or something like that.
Yeah, Doc, I was, when you were on 285, one foot with building frontage in that, in that this one, is there any discussion about having a variance or be able to, so if somebody had a hardship and they didn't have the glass frontage or the glass base?
Well, 2885A1 is for a primary sign.
Right.
So that is one put, one foot, square foot of sign per building frontage.
So you cannot make it any larger than that?
No.
Okay, and there's no variance available? I'm just asking.
That's, that's open for discussion.
Okay, I just, which is fine, I just wanna throw it out, because if some people for whatever site distance is or whatever, wanted a bigger one, or even a. Oh, not to exceed, so we're good.
We kicked it around a, a little bit. If you had a small shop set way back, then you, then you qualify for a space on a ladder sign. If you're, and we couldn't think of too many that had tiny windows at the street front, but it was, the underlying idea was, just seems like signage in the downtown is competitive. It's, I can think of one in, in one block downtown where just all kinds of miscellaneous pieces of paper are there to attract attention. It is, we're trying to have signs that don't shout at people. We're looking for a walk, a pedestrian environment and hoping that we can make signage reinforce that.
With the west end of Main Street?
Yes.
Where we have the flooding issue?
Yes.
And you build it to wrap a building. Limit your size to your window.
Oh, wrap a building, what, I'm sorry.
For the flood issues, so you can, you can put the building in flood zone as long as it's technically wrapped, like Mix, or, which is now, what's the seaside scoops?
Seaside scoops, yeah.
Those are not windows.
Yes, right.
So.
I think they may have done that for other reasons, but.
I think it's for the flood.
I will tell you, the, the former ASAX shoe.
Yes.
Came before DRC, and we, we wanted, and I think this group wants to, retail on the first floor.
Right.
And we were a little disappointed in that they looked like the scale of residential windows, and the engineer said, that's for the flood.
That's.
We can't have, we'll have smallish windows because it's gonna take the flood pressure.
Exactly. That's what I'm thinking, for any revitalization of downtown, if they were to build to that standard and not elevate, I'm just wondering.
Whether there should be a variance?
Just, you're the design review, and you deal with it all the time.
But we're sub to you guys.
No, but I'm saying, you deal with it all the time, I just wanna make sure that we may have issues if we can't have a variance, if it's assigned to a window, and if you don't have that window space, or for some hardship you don't have it, you might have to put an, an ability to waive it.
We can take that under advisement, as long as it's as specific to one phrase, rather than make it a general thing, that everything's debatable.
Yeah, I just, you know, and not to exceed, you know, but I understand your intent, but I, I think with the future building designs, if they don't elevate the structure, if they build it like ASAX, that you're not gonna have the, the square inches of square footage of window design, and then you're gonna have a conflict.
What we've always thought is, window signs are subsidiary to the primary sign. If you've got a message, if you, your, your commercial identifier is your primary sign, everyone's allowed. And so many people, you kind of hope that the window signs would be a little graphic, you can see in, you can see in hours, that type of thing. And we've just found those being abused by wraps, you know what I mean? The dot screens that are semi-opaque, the military recruiter comes to mind. And all kinds of miscellaneous in the windows, which we don't like.
No, I agree, I.
So to be clear, if you're, we're talking about the, sorry, find myself here. Per 280, 2885A1, is, do you want a variance, are you suggesting we may consider a variance there in addition to?
I'm happy with that one, to a certain extent, I just wanted to make sure that it, the variance or waiver was available. But with the window component, that's the one I.
The upper floor.
Right.
Could it be in a flood plain?
I, you know, I don't, I just throwing it out there, you know, just.
I think there should be an option, I think there should be a.
Lipper variance.
Everything is.
A waiver, I can do a waiver.
You can look at everything perfectly, looks good on paper when you get there, oh, that's not right, so, some sort of a waiver.
Let's define waiver, does waiver mean, I've got a special case, and if you agree with me, the law does not apply, meaning I can, I can have 85% of the window covered? Or are you saying that we can, that a variance in the percentage may be allowable upon review of the DRC?
Yep, up to a maximum of.
Yeah, up to.
Whatever. Maximum of.
Whatever you would think it would be.
I just.
Should be a little wiggle room, that's all we're looking for.
Yep.
It keeps a wiggle room too, you know, because you encounter weird situations.
Every situation's weird.
Are you loving it, Chair?
I think if Jim's okay with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna go with.
Been here for nine years. Liz, about nine years on the board?
Yeah.
Everything's weird.
Yeah, I, I agree. Things you wouldn't expect to be weird.
Yeah, weird. Wouldn't be.
Fine.
Okay. Let me just read this back. So let's see, this is the one permanent window. One permanent window, 25% of the total storefront window area. A variance may be.
Let's call it a waiver.
What'd you call it, sorry?
Waiver.
A waiver, yeah.
A waiver may be.
Granted.
Granted, there, that's the right word, granted, if, if circumstances apply at the discretion of the DRC.
Right.
And if you want up to.
To a maximum of 50%. I'm just throwing a number out.
All right.
Hardship?
That's a key word.
Yeah.
Right. Hardship circumstances.
Thank you.
Sure, I just have a habit of doing shorthand events.
Would you envision those window signs being, because that's not their primary sign.
That is not their primary sign.
It's not their primary sign, so what would you envision those window signs would be saying? Because now you're gonna grant them 50%, which is not their primary sign, so what are they gonna be saying?
The first thing they have to do is convince us it's a hardship. You've got a primary sign, everybody else on the street is limited to 25%, and why do you need more? What's your special circumstance, you know, okay, or deny, 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 and make your case.
For example, if you, if your floor space on your businesses, and you have in your storefront, it goes back.
Yep.
And you've got 10 businesses in that building on the first floor. And you're only allowed one square foot first frontage, and everybody claims, of those 10 businesses, claims most of those signs, space, in your square footage. There's a hardship, because now there's not space for the second-floor person to put it on, so you might wanna say, lawyers on, you know, I'm just.
I would, here's my take on it. That is, if they're up on the street, they don't qualify for a monument sign. If it's set back, there's a monument sign problem solved. Up on the street, it's got a fit on, let's call it a menu board.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, yeah.
And however large it has to be, we'll grant it if it's legitimate, and you all have to fit on it, landlord has to provide it. So many of these things, we are caught between the tenant and the landlord. Landlord won't let me put my, my band on their ladder sign, so I wanna put it, I wanna put 50% in the windows. And again, is that our problem, that you're, it's, it's a messy process. So.
Well, 25%, maximum 25%? I don't know, I just, but he's thinking of a group of hardships.
I think this would be a great problem to have.
You're gonna burn, you're gonna burn this little, this little person.
That means there's some fantastic growth in multi-story buildings.
We're getting there, we're getting there.
Getting there.
I, I just see, because every time you go a little bit further, you have to remember, they're gonna go a little bit further.
Yes.
So you're gonna allow 25, now you're saying 50, they're gonna go to 75.
I would tell you what.
And your enforcement is gonna be crazy, because now you're gonna be calculating.
Maybe it's entirely at the discretion of the DRC.
Yeah.
It's just no percentage max, yeah, just no percentage.
There you go, short and sweet.
All right.
This feels like something that's like, gonna be extremely challenging to regulate.
Yep.
In my.
It will.
That's why.
You know, this is, it's too much.
You cannot, you cannot, you cannot plan for everything, pages, you get surprised left, right, and center.
Guidelines, guidelines.
We've got some things in here that I wouldn't have thought about two years ago.
I hope we have the problem, like I said.
More business, yes.
Yep.
All right, now, page six, down at the bottom.
Yeah.
Sidewalk Cafe, delete all this sidewalk cafe umbrella in addition to the main occupancy sign. We decided that generic signs on the umbrella, you know, Campari, Budweiser, no. Because, they get them free, you know, it's part of the deal, and we're just saying, that's just another form of generic advertising, it's like, make some pizza, Coca-Cola, the whole thing put up by them. And we said no. To umbrellas with generic advertising on, if you've got Joe's Pizza, go with our blessing, but if it says Budweiser, no. Also, we thought a temporary A-frame sign for an outdoor cafe allows people to walk up, look at the menu, make a decision, it's street furniture. Special events, sign for information on a limited temporary basis upon approval of the design review board. Generic advertising such as standard brand, corporate symbols, logos, slogans, or product names are not allowed. That applies to cafes. Temporary signs, 2287, no change. Construction signs, we've had a problem with construction signs, someone's doing a driveway pavement job, it's done in 10 days, and the sign is up there a long time after. One temporary sign. One temporary sign, this is 2887, temporary signs be construction, number one. One temporary sign, advertising the various construction trades participating in the project is allowed for 30 days, the sign shall be promptly removed within 48 hours upon completion of the specific construction, repair, or renovation work.
I'm gonna throw a curveball.
All right.
One temporary sign for the whole project or for every contractor?
I would, I would say for all the, all the contractors.
Okay.
All the contractors, just organize it.
So one sign.
That's right. Now, the actual, if it's going to be.
That's why I used to find a generic advertising.
Calamar homes, that's presumably a permanent sign, these are entirely construction. And we just want them organized and under control, that there is a, there's an end date for it.
Yeah.
So a question on that one. It's a construction site, some construction sites required to post all the different rules and regulations for that.
Or unders.
We just wouldn't, we wouldn't ding them for that. That's a reasonable misclause.
If you go up to where, off of Sandwich Road, where they're doing, where they're doing construction, that it tells you what the crane operators are making, EPA, everything.
DEP permit number.
EEP, everything.
You're just talking about advertising for the contracts.
Now, if you want, we can put in, unless legally mandated, something like that.
Or excluded.
Excluded or mandated.
Hey, mandated, mandated, required signs by state or local are excluded.
Yes, 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 all right.
From this.
Better put federal in there too.
Yeah, that's a lot of the federal.
Talking about building some structures around here, I don't know. About thirty years from now.
Government.
Green bridges?
No. Not gonna see any bridges.
They didn't have the name, the word federal to my signs.
Do you want to leave that a little more generic?
So I can leave it up. Another federally.
You just wanna say mandated government signs?
Here's, here's what I have, here's what I have, and we can just, we can hammer on this one. Mandated federal, state, local regulatory signs are excluded.
County, what about county?
That's local.
That's local, yeah, that's local.
Just that town name is the first. Signs. Construction signs, number four.
Can you answer the other question, I'm sorry?
Sorry.
That's okay. I just wanna, I just wanna clarify. So if you have a construction site and you have multiple vendors, okay, you have an electrician, you have the contractor.
Can everybody put their own signs or do they all have to be on one sign?
Because.
I think they could put their own, their own graphic on one sign.
Okay, 'cause I, and I don't, I mean, maybe that's done normally, I don't know. But I feel like that would be extra work. Is that true or is that a standard that they all put their, every, all?
On major constructions projects, I've seen the general contractor takes care of all that and list his subcontractors. Excavation, whatever, I think that would apply.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, because if.
And we didn't live at their size.
Yeah, but if every guy, if every subcontractor put up their own sign, it'd be crazy.
You know, billboard.
People wouldn't even be able to concentrate on it, they go by it.
But if there's a process for it, that's perfect, that seems like, okay, that's great, thanks.
The sign may, number four, the sign may remain on new construction property until the occupants, until occupancy unless an extension has been granted by the Inspector of Buildings.
By the Building Inspector.
Uh, sorry, the Building Inspector, where you are.
I'll tell you, he's gonna wanna be called the Inspector of Buildings, because we used to have Building Inspector and they changed it all to Inspector.
I saw it somewhere, and that's why we always wrote Inspector of Buildings.
That was at the request of the Building Inspector, we call the Inspector of Buildings.
Inspector of Buildings.
So town council?
So now we're back the other way.
Town councils changed that?
No, the Building Inspector requested that change in, in the zoning bylaw.
The old one, the old Building Inspector.
Yes, because I guess when they go to their classes, they develop and then they come back and.
So number four essentially says what you were saying, Chris, that organized construction sign with long-term trades can stay until occupancy.
Right.
Then they go. Okay, that's it for numbers. Page seven. Page eight, two eight eight eight, signs not permitted. This is where we get into some of the specifics of, that were placed here and there earlier. Rooftop signs, cabinet signs, including neon, LED, digital. Signs containing exposed light bulbs or neon tubes, signs with flashing, blinking, intermittent or rotating lights, banners except for grand opening, civic events, balloons, this is existing language, flashing signs because it's covered above. Billboards, plastic, whiteboard, chalkboards, blackboards, wireframe yard signs except for temporary political construction signs. Any comments? It's just the signs that are shouting at you, basically.
Open, 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 those flashing.
That's right.
Like you said, a lot of those are free too, and people just put them up there, never get a permit or anything.
Right. Number C, no sign should be located over town property or within any public right-of-way except for awnings, projecting signs without the approval of the Select Board after receiving recommendation from the Design Review Committee. So if, for instance, some building is tight against the public sidewalk and you wanna put a projecting sign over it and meets our requirements about headspace, we can grant it, but the Selectmen, I believe, have to approve it.
Right.
The town property. F, any advertising device or sign that depends on movement provided by an electrical or mechanical inflation device. That's pretty straight, straightforward. G, advertising device or sign that involves the use of motion pictures, animation, projected photographic scenes, digital images, messages, including the projection of images and text onto public sidewalks. You see them all over downtown Boston now. Newbury Street is, you know, it's a second floor projector and they project advertising down on the public sidewalk. I don't think that's us. H, any sign attached to a public or private utility poles, signal, utility boxes, trees, other signs, or other pertinences located within the public right-of-way. Essentially, anything within the public right-of-way.
I believe that's covered under the general bylaw right now. Because we've had, when I was on the department, we would get calls all the time, yard sale signs tacked up to a telephone pole. And that's generally.
We, we put it here for one-stop shopping.
Right.
You know, I'm just trying to keep it as simple as possible, that here's a guy with a business, he walks into the planning department, says, what do I do? Start here and read to the end, and it should cover.
Almost everything, yeah.
Everything we can think of.
On your G, digital images or messages.
Right.
I think for the municipal needs, we have to be excluded.
Okay, now, they don't have to, I don't believe they have to come to DRC.
I'm just saying, I just wanna make sure because.
I think that's covered under the general bylaw also.
Okay, because.
You can't put anything up on a public street sign or on a utility pole. Except for municipality.
You're saying the municipality puts the sign up?
Yeah.
Right, so I don't think you need that.
You might be going too fast, blink, blink, blink.
Or town meeting tonight.
Put yourself down when you're walking across the street.
So municipal.
Agencies excluded.
Excluded.
I know, at one time.
Maybe from this bylaw.
Yeah, yeah.
At one time in the park, they wanted to put one of those signs, those digital signs that keeps changing to say, you know, the upcoming events in the park. So is that excluded?
That's what I mean, you might add a caveat, you know, in your opening of.
I think public safety signs are one thing compared to just.
Twenty-eight eighty?
The municipality.
In the general sign regulations, you might wanna put a little paragraph in there that the municipal needs supersede this.
Or state.
Yeah, fed, state.
Here's the thing.
State don't ask anyway.
I, I wanna take Corinne's port, point, and that is, if someone comes up, and I'm gonna make up somebody, the Historic Society comes up and says, I want a changeable digital sign permanently installed in the park to interpret stuff. I don't wanna give him a free pass.
Approved by the Town Selectmen. Any?
It's town property.
Any, it is from the town.
But it's hard to say that you can't do it, but then the town does it. If it's so offensive, why isn't it offensive for the town to do it?
I'm just. Making my case.
I know, I am.
Well, I'm just saying, town meetings, we have the speed limit thing coming in right now.
Yep.
They got town meeting advertisements. I just, that happens now.
As long as they're temporary, I can live with that.
I kind of agree with you.
Anyway.
Well, I, I do too, but I just wanna make sure that somebody says, well, why can you do it and I can't? That's, that's my complaint.
It should just say, except for municipal.
Municipal needs.
How about on a temporary basis?
Approved by the Selectmen.
Right, yeah. They're not here, they give.
Because they could put up those signs that say town meeting Monday night.
But those are flashing, blinking, and all that.
Yeah.
They've got the town meeting signs all over the place, yeah.
See Buzzers Bay?
Oh, the temporary ones that they pull on that, on that trailer, yeah.
Those are put up temporarily, and those are flashing, oscillating.
That's always there, that has messages on it.
All right, so you're thinking about putting that in the front, two eight eight one, general provisions?
Yeah, this is a thought, municipal needs, I, I'm just throwing it out for an idea.
It's already mentioned in the town bylaw.
I think so. I, I think if we just put the caveat in there, except for governmental agencies, because then that covers.
Yeah, just say excluding municipal needs or something.
Or governmental, yeah. Because that could be state, town, and we know the state's gonna be doing whatever. They'd do anyhow.
You're not gonna change that?
Thank you.
I was hoping for it by the way.
I don't wanna be lost, Vegas. They're famous for their neon signs.
Yes, they are, and that's where they belong.
So Dan, municipal signs excluded, as simple as that, as a sentence?
Fully municipal.
All right, fine.
Less is more.
Yeah.
Approval is there, all right.
Because I think that, well, you're not supposed to have moving signs anywhere in town, and Upper Cape has theirs.
Yep.
I had that discussion with Roger when he's here, and he goes, no, as long as it doesn't change every fifteen seconds, I don't know where he came up with that number, but he came up with a number, as long as it doesn't, it's not a rolling sign, it just changes periodically, then he didn't consider that a moving sign.
Well, they built the Taj Mahal over there after that last Mercedes-Benz hit it.
I, I like that sign though.
I like the bridge on the Taj.
Yes, and they put some personality into it at certain moments.
Calais Arena has one too.
So I'm back on two eight eight eight, signs not permitted, page eight.
But this is only for downtown?
Yeah.
Number I, signs advertising products, sales, events, activities that are tack glued, otherwise attached to benches, barrels, buildings, posts, sidewalks, they put them in the damnedest places. Windows regardless of construction or application, except as otherwise provided herein. That's, that's the kind of thing that just, people have an idea. They get, they get these signs that they put the paste on the back and just slap them everywhere. I've seen them on sidewalks, and it takes a long time for them to wear, wear off. And public utility boxes are great for it, it's perfect. So anyway, we wanted to have that in there. J, signs attached to any vehicle except for signs applied directly to the surface of the vehicle. The primary use of such vehicle shall be in the operation of the business and not in advertising or identifying the business premises. Vehicle should not be parked in a public right-of-way for the purposes of advertising. I had also meant to cover private property, and I'm hoping that first sentence does, because we had an example way down by the Cohasset Narrows, down there, some guy had a box truck with a plastic canvas sign just parked next to his business on private property, and it was a giant advertising sign. And we dinged him for it and he removed it, but it was, I don't think it was ever called out specifically here.
Twenty-eight A, can't torment, the, the van that the plumber's on.
Yeah, this is Main Street.
Yeah, this is all downtown, but that's exactly the point. Signs containing generic advertising such as a standard brand, corporate symbol, logo, slogan, or product name, this is the same as a cafe umbrellas, this is Knicks Pizza sign. This is, this is, this is the Knicks clause.
Yeah.
Yeah, Doc, can I make a suggestion about that, the whole generic advertising thing? Why not just say, signs such as standard brand, corporate symbol, blah, 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 blah? Instead of, generic advertising is not a term that we all agree on. So I don't think it's bringing anything to the situation here. You're not, you're not clarifying anything. I, I just think you should state what the things are. That's, that's my, you know, let me just say that.
Is there a word you wanna drop out? You wanna, signs containing, drop generic, signs containing advertising such as.
Containing generic advertising out, and then just leave the rest. And the same thing with the, with the umbrellas. I just, like I said, it's just kind of, then they'll spend all their time, you know, oh, well, this is okay, because it's, it's not generic, you know, it's like, I don't know, I'm just saying.
Does that make sense?
Sometimes the more you say, the more people are trying to, you know.
So like the Knicks sign, Coca-Cola, and then Knicks is just big.
Yeah, Knicks is big, Coke's.
Coke put it up.
But if it's a Coca-Cola office, they're allowed the Coca-Cola sign.
Of course.
Well, that's the business.
I have seen, I have seen a couple of down Cape towns that said that the business owner will produce receipts indicating that Coca-Cola is twenty-five percent of your revenue. I thought that was a little cumbersome for us.
Yeah.
But some towns.
People's Republic of Channel?
It's not Mark's Massachusetts. I've seen that, but I, we kind of agreed that I, you couldn't see it.
You can't even tell you not to have one of them banana flags, and now we're gonna ask for twenty-five percent of your business? I don't think so.
Doc?
Uh, yes.
Twenty-eight eighty-eight.
Yep.
I, the last one, signs illuminated with exposed neon or gas-filled tubes. That's also included in twenty-eight eighty-eight A.
Twenty-eight eighty-eight, we're doing a second here.
A and L.
So A, A and I are both, basically say the same thing. L, L, sorry, L.
So delete L.
They basically say the same thing, am I correct?
Yes, it said neon tubes, that, I guess we've crossed that out.
Okay, so we can get rid of that.
Now, on these neon signs, something like the priest example, the gas station downtown, they have the lottery sign that's lit up.
Digital?
Digital.
We're, we allow digital signs for gas stations, changeable. The idea is their product changes daily, so they've made the case that it is so bloody cumbersome that for gas stations, we allow digital. Basically pump signs.
But also the lottery signs are in the window, which are internally lit, signs that say, mega bucks is four hundred million tonight.
And the liquor stores do the same thing with the Budweiser million.
We, we have a couple of bad actors who have just thumbed their noses at us and enforced it, just try us.
Okay. I can see that being an issue, but most of the time, they're not sticking it in their front window.
Exemptions, none. Appeal, that's in the bylaw currently, abandoned signs.
Knicks sign.
This one's key.
Knicks.
Yes, right. An abandoned sign that one identifies advertising a business, a service.
It's been open for five, six years.
Product or activity no longer exists or for which no legal owner can be found. So if, if you leave the business, sign goes.
I think that was already in here. Isn't it?
No.
I can remember that.
There are some things that sort of are a tangent to it, but there's no specific language. There's no simple language that says it's a ban, defining abandonment. Is if it's not advertising a product currently available inside that door, it's an abandoned sign.
So what about for seasonal?
Let's see, we talked about seasonal. Wait a minute, let me see.
Wasn't it under the special events?
Let me back up. Because we talked about the little farmer market, like at the, the Bay Motor Inn has little things. Under exemptions, two eight eight nine E, holiday decorations clearly incidental, customary, and commonly associated national, provided, no, it's holiday decorations. I remember talking about it.
Wouldn't it be like, the, the motor lodge down the street here, when they have a thing at the toy for tot thing, they put a sign out, but it's, it's seasonal, it's temporary.
It's section two eight eight seven, temporary. Section two eight eight seven, temporary signs.
Temporary.
That covers temporary signs.
Right.
Grand opening, toys for tots, stuff a bus.
Don't forget real estate signs when they put up the old houses and direct the people down the street.
Well, it can't be on public property.
They do it.
They do it, uh, yeah, that's. I'd like to get on break some kneecaps, but I can't.
Agent on duty. Ready, how about you, you for hire?
I am.
I'll be that sign enforcer, you wanna pay me?
That's our problem, we don't wanna pay anybody.
We don't get paid, so you don't get paid.
I'm really getting my IT check for tonight.
Where are we now?
Now we're on twenty eight ninety, appeal, and no change, thirty days. File your appeal in thirty days after receipt of a decision by the Devant Design Review Committee. Sorry, abandoned signs. So now H, the building inspector shall undertake a review of any alleged abandoned sign upon his own initiative or upon receipt of a complaint from an individual, a civic organization, or other governmental agency. C, when the building inspector determines that a sign is abandoned as defined by this bylaw, he will notify the property owner of said determination, request that the abandoned sign be removed subject to the penalty provisions of section twelve seventy of the zoning bylaw. Enforcement violators will be given written notification of any signed bylaw violations by the building inspector. Any owner found to be in violation of this bylaw shall first receive a written warning and thirty days to remedy all violations prior to institution of any enforcement actions. Any person who fails to adhere, B, any person who fails to adhere to this bylaw after thirty day remedy shall be subject to the provisions of section twelve seventy of the zoning bylaw. We didn't want, we didn't want fines spelled out in two locations.
No.
You don't want conflicts, so. I don't remember the numbers, but is it fifty dollars and does it go to a hundred, I'm trying to?
I'm sorry, I was just looking at.
Fifty a day.
Fifty, yeah.
Administration severability, administration enforcement of this bylaw shall be with the authority of the select board or their legally appointed representative, the building inspector. B, every section of this bylaw, every separate part therein shall be considered a separate regulation to the extent of any section subdivision, separate part thereof is declared invalid or unconstitutional, it shall not reflect, it shall not affect the remaining parts of this bylaw. That is standard boilerplate in almost every zoning document, in multiple places.
On the, in the paragraph before that, when it talks about administration enforcement, in the bylaw, I think it's around twelve seventy, it says who's the enforcer of the zoning bylaw.
That would be the building inspector.
Building inspector, so it just, when you get down to where it says, um, within the authority of the select board or legally appointed representative, it's already been determined who's the enforcer of the.
So you don't think it needs select board?
Nope.
All right.
Sorry.
Shall be within the.
That's how, I didn't bring my bylaw, I'm always like, you should have, does anybody have their bylaw?
Yeah, it's, um, one, two, six, two.
Six, two. So I will delete reference to authority of the select board or legal, legally appointed, shall be within the authority of the building inspector.
Yeah, because the building, you have the building inspector, and then you also have the option of an enforcement officer, if so appointed, so that's already in the zoning bylaw.
So we can leave it at building inspector, you think? Okay. Shall be within the authority of the building inspector.
Congrats Jen on coming up with the twelve sixty-two number right out of the air.
Yeah. They were correct.
Downtown, and then definitions, you might normally put definition in the front, but that would have meant resummarating everything, so you put definitions at the back, just as simple as that.
Sort of like the appendix.
Yep.
If you like, yes, exactly.
I like it.
But it, Doc, it complements all the work in here because it's defined.
Yes, if there's a question, we thought it necessary. It's a lot of work.
Yeah, it's really helpful.
We've been out a couple of years.
Yeah.
Where the definitions shall differ from or conflict with section five definitions, the definition of this section shall prevail, and this is, this is confined to the downtown in specific signage, so we don't go too far afield. Abandoned sign, a sign which no longer identifies, advertises a bona fide business, lessor, service owner, product or activity and for which no legal owner can be found. Advertising device, a piece of equipment, an object, or mechanism designed to attract the attention of the public for a commercial purpose. Animated sign, sign or any portion of a sign made or equipped to move and give the appearance of motion either by the movement of light, any light used in conjunction with the sign such as blinking, traveling, flashing, changing degree of intensity, or mechanical means, or that is wind driven, feather signs, and is designed to move with, with the movement of the air. Oning sign, a sign attached to or printed upon the awning material supported by framing which is attached to a building. A banner is a piece of lightweight fabric or similar material attached to a pole, staff, or other support at one or more edges, state, national, or official flag of any institution, shall not be considered banners. We actually kicked around limiting the number of American flags, and we dropped it.
Uh, we weren't going that way.
You know, I think.
That was a good, that was a good drop.
You know, we thought about it, if you look at the gas station up there at Belmont Circle, uh, that's, you know, it's a kind of a look at me thing, but we figured, don't touch no third rail.
Pick your battles.
Not, not now, not now.
You know, it's funny with the flags, you go through, you, some of the older towns, so if you go through the, I think it's two way, through Westminster, and when all the holidays come up, every telephone pole has an American flag going down. So it's like you're going through a gauntlet of American flags.
Yeah.
And there was one out in New York that was like, blow your mind, so, you're in a patriotic city, do it alone.
We didn't have to discuss it long.
No, I'm sure.
Building front, the portion of a building facing the sidewalk, street, or any portion of a building which has a separate business or in separate egress and ingress for the public, facing a public lot or a public way.
Question on that.
Sure.
If you have a building, and it's on a driveway or an alleyway, and you have, everybody's facing the sidewalk, but that business's entrance is on the alleyway or the driveway, it's on the side.
That's where he wants his sign.
That's where he wants his sign.
And it's, I, we didn't think it was unreasonable.
What's the sign on the wall pointing that way?
Or something like that, well, you know, every, like you say, you can't plan for everything.
No.
But if you've got a street and you've got an alleyway, and they have a, a business that faces the alleyway, a public alleyway, let's say.
We must then, the tattoo place in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
Yes. Then, how do we put it? That shall be considered a building, a building front, so the, the building frontage regulations apply to that, to that business.
Okay.
That building's frontage, that side street frontage only. Changeable copy sign, a sign that is designed so that characters, letters, and illustrations can be changed or rearranged either manually or digitally without altering the face or dismantling the surface of the sign. Directional information sign, any sign near the street or driveway necessary for the safety and direction of vehicle or pedestrian traffic. The sandwich shop in the Shell Station near Belmont Circle. You know, it's around the back on the side, and so they have a little sign that says, I don't know, sandwich chow, something.
Doc?
Yeah.
The changeable copy sign?
Yes, I, I.
Where it says dismantling the surface of the sign, you said sur, surface.
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, surface, you're right, absolutely right, thank you. That's right. Exactly right. Directory sign, any sign listing the name, location, and occupants of a site or a building. So I figure if you have multiple tenants, the directory sign covers the people on the second, third floor. Erected, attached, constructed, reconstructed, that's key, altered, enlarged, or moved. Erected shall not mean repainted, cleaned, repaired, or maintained, except where a structural change is made. Altered includes changes to the lettering or symbol on the sign. Feather sign, a type of vertical banner made of flexible fabric, the longer dimension of which is typically attached to a pole or rod driven into the ground and/or supported by an individual stand.
So the only place I see those is actually in the park when they're doing a special event.
You see them down MacArthur Boulevard, but that's not the downtown.
Right.
Right now, there's one right in front of Buzz's Bay Pizza.
Yes, they, you know, it's mushrooms after the rain.
Cumberland Farm, you have the bandit clothes on the pole.
And also the coroplast on the, on the bollards, they're good for the, we're probably on our third round with them. They, they lay low for about six months or so, and then we have to send them out the letter. Flag, any sign consisting of lightweight fabric affixed to a single pole displaying letters indicating open or sale dimensions not to exceed three by five. Ground, a ground sign, a sign, single or double face, supported on ground level by posts or similar vertical supports. We don't allow lollipop signs, it's gotta have two posts, and that's in the architectural guidelines at the back. Halo light, light showing from the back or from within a letter or graphic shape out towards the surface that that letter or graphic is mounted upon without having the light visible through the letter or the graphic, that means no translucent letters. You can have a letter, all aluminum, and it shines back on the wall, and it kind of makes a halo around it, but no internal illumination. Iconographic sign, a three dimensional sign, such as a clock or a barber pole on which lettering is clearly subordinate. Illegal sign, a sign which does not meet the requirements of the section which has not received legal conforming status. Illuminating sign, a sign or exposed, exposed or exposed to artificial light either by lights on or in the sign or directed towards the sign, including halo lighting, direct external lighting, indirect lighting, internal illumination, flashing, intermittent lighting. So some of those are allowable, some of those are not, and you have to go to a different section to find out that internal illumination is not allowed, it's just a definition.
Doc, back to illegal signs.
Got it.
Is it nonconforming or conforming? So a sign which does not meet the requirements of the section and which have not received legal conforming.
A grandfather's sign, is what we're thinking.
So, yeah, it should not be nonconforming, it should be conforming, right?
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Has not received legal.
Conforming status.
Is it? I'll take your word for it, just.
It's nonconforming.
Grandfathered, it's a grandfathered, nonconforming sign, I don't think.
Nonconform, but it's legal.
How about grandfathered status?
A what?
How about grandfathered status?
Yeah, instead of.
All right, fine.
Under illegal signs.
Illegal signs, has not received.
Grandfathered.
Grandfathered.
Grandfather quote, grand.
Grandfathered.
Grandfathered status.
The only way it will receive grandfather status is like what Fred just said, because his business hasn't changed, it's always been the same. Soon as you put, change that business, it loses all its meaning. There aren't too many of those businesses left.
Uh, there's some, there are some legal rulings that have complicated this. Some, there was a case, I think, in Framingham of a car dealer, and he, sign didn't change size, but he took off the face of it and re-faced it, and the court allowed him to do it. I don't know if that's settled law.
Prevailing, presiding.
Sorry?
You don't mean presiding, like a presiding case, saying it's.
I don't know, yeah, right, a precedent, I.
Precedent.
But I'd like to go for it, you know, that.
It all depends on how their bylaw was written also.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, you have to take that in consideration.
Indirect lighting, illumination by means of a concealed light source whereby all devices are shielded from view by opaque materials, including, including reflected lighting. This, this goes a little bit to illuminated signs and also halo lighting. Internal illumination, illumination by means of a light source completely enclosed by the sign panels. And it goes without saying, the only reason to have it there is the sign panels are translucent, otherwise you couldn't see it. Ladder sign, a freestanding, ground mounted sign with two vertical supports with two or more horizontal cross pieces serving as individual signs for identification or advertising purposes. LED, light emitting diode, electronic device that emits light when electric current is passed through it. Logo, distinctive emblem, or insignia identifying a particular product, service, business, activity, or entity. Maintenance of a sign, the cleaning, painting, repair, replacement of a defective part of a sign in a manner that does not alter the basic copy design structure of the sign, is maintenance. A monument sign, this refers back to ladder sign, a freestanding, ground mounted sign located adjacent to the right of way and independent of the building, allowed only for developments whose primary building facade is fifteen feet or more from the property frontage line. Mural, a depiction that provides artistic expression and does not include in whole or in part the name, text, logo, or illustration depicting any business, establishment, service, or product. You, it's an arts installation. If somebody sponsors it, we would discuss whether they'd allow something down in the corner that says donated by someone, but if a quarter of the sign says Budweiser, not allowed. It's, it's an artistic expression, not a form of advertising. Nonconforming sign, a sign which was erected legally but does not comply with subsequently enacted regulations. So we can, we can say also called grandfathered, we can add that in, if you'd like.
I think this is a different definition, right? This is just to define a nonconforming.
Well, let me go back here. We, we, I think we wanted to cross out, has not received legal, nonconforming status. This one uses some of the same language, nonconforming sign, a sign which was erected legally but which does not comply with subsequently enacted regulations. We thought no one formerly blessed it, it has not received any kind of, it's grandfathered, but it's nonconforming. We didn't say, by writ of the DRC, you are now conforming, even though it's an ancient sign. I would vote to keep nonconforming, we define it here, and we, if we want to augment it with quote grandfathered, I'm good with that, but I still think nonconforming has, has a legal, a legal meaning here.
Preexisting, nonconforming, grandfathered.
Or just preexisting.
Add more words.
Keyword, keyword, preexisting.
A sign that was erected illegally but does not comply with subsequently enacted regulations. I'd be happy to put in parenthesis grandfathered.
That's, that, that, that takes stupid out of stupid. Don't worry about it on TV, because my wife said we're not, she's not, I can't watch you anymore.
And everybody understands what nonconforming means, I mean, I know that's a stupid question. We do.
Well, we do.
But if I'm someone who was wondering, well, how do I know what nonconforming?
Break your word down, is it conformed, do you conform? No, so you're nonconforming.
Conform to.
The current regulations, size, height, illumination, that kind of stuff. And I think a lot of these take care of themselves when they talk to Jen. I mean, seventy-five percent of the battle is to get people to realize that they need a sign, they need a sign permit. The same, they need, they need a, a building permit, should be the same thought process.
Is there any better way to define somewhere in here when a sign is required? I know that that seems stupid, because you've gone to great lengths to explain how to make a sign, and what the sign should look like, and when you can have a sign, and yet somehow, that's not coming. and what the sign should look like and when you can have a sign, and yet somehow that's not coming through. You know, and, and I, I'm reading this for the first time, so.
And I, and I'm saying this for the first time. We are not in control of a person's commercial interest. You know, if someone says, I think I can make a buck here and proposes a business, a residence, a hotel, anything, and then, well, I better go to the town and see if it's okay with them. And then I don't think they're gonna put up a business without a sign. So once you determine you need a sign, stop by Jen's office and make an appointment. And, um, I'd like to think the rest of it will fall in place.
Yeah, I mean, you've been doing this longer, so you've had people come before you with, but when someone has not recognized it, what was the reason? They just don't want to spend the money or?
If they don't put up a sign, we don't care.
No, but I mean, if they have, I guess my question was what triggers the need for a sign? Like if someone's changing the sign or.
You mean, or for a permit? Because you're saying a need for a sign, so that was.
I'm sorry, I me- I meant a need for a permit.
First page.
No person shall erect, modify or move any sign within, is that, that's the part.
Erect, modify, remove, uh, alter. Does that mean?
By the way, it says inspector of buildings. Are we gonna change that? In that A, A of two eight eight one.
That's the proper term, right?
Same thing.
Yeah, you're changing it back to a term that you want.
Changing it back, all right, sorry.
Well, whatever it is, it's consistent.
I think we should just cha- yeah, change that other back to inspector of buildings.
All right, so I'm gonna say inspector of buildings, universal.
Just, Gina, okay. So it's one that permit is required. Okay, I mean, yeah, I guess, you know, I think you should be able to figure that out. And I don't think you'd put this in the bylaw, but it's certainly gonna come up when, when you have to talk about the bylaw. Everybody's gonna go, why? You know, why, why are we doing this?
Yep.
Because it's been years and years and years that we've been working on the downtown, the way the downtown looks. And I think people have kind of forgotten that there's a desire to make it consistent and to upgrade the appearance while also balancing the needs of advertising for business, you know?
That's our purpose, is to make a level playing field where no one gains an advantage by having a sign out in the street that says stop or flashing neon or.
And then some safety, you've talked about some safety concerns, right?
Yes, so.
And, and it's attractive for everyone. The town, downtown is for everyone. It's not just for the business people, but we want them to be, have latitude to do the things that they need to do.
I'll have a part in creating that environment. This is what's gonna regulate the sign part of it.
Doc, I got a question on one item, two locations, clock.
Clock, yeah, right. Iconic sign.
Is it covered, is it allowed, there's one on the fire station which has got a neon light on the inside.
Yep.
That lights up, but you can't see the neon light. You know, directly. It, it backlight it. And then there's another one right across the street here.
Perry, Perry Avenue, right.
Right.
Love them.
I'm just, if they want to modify them, but some, I mean, it's allowed. What I'm trying to get at is if they change it.
Is a clock a sign?
It's an iconic sign, like a barber pole.
I mean, this one over here has a plaque underneath it as well as the clock.
It's an honor of.
Right.
I mean, that, that preceded this, I mean, these regulations. The town never came to.
Well, it makes it grandfathered.
Yep, so it'd be grandfathered. I'm just wondering in the future if something.
Those things that add texture to the downtown, information, visual delight, I'm on board.
Right.
You know, I wouldn't mess, I don't care if it's got neon, I wouldn't mess with it because I like it.
Because they're iconic and they, it's useful and it's not directing to a business.
It's unusual, it's, it's architectural detail. It's all the good stuff.
I just, when people talk about the posts and signs, I just want to make sure that we allow that and that we understand that.
I think the DRC uses a lot of discretion.
Which is good.
They'll just say, I don't think that's one, you know, that we should go after just because it is, the overall effect is positive.
I just hope that that attitude is there fifteen and twenty years from now when we are not. Well, fifty years from now, because you guys might still be here fifty years from now.
Okay, now we're. Indirect sign, internal illumination, ladder sign where, uh, page thirteen, projecting sign.
Did you get kicked out of the house?
Any sign other than a wall sign, flat against the building, a wall sign is flat against the building, projecting sign out from the building and projects from that structure.
Yep.
Ridge line, the highest point of a main roof structure, highest point on a parapet shall not include cupolas, pylons, projections or minor raised portions of the roof. Roof sign, a sign that is located above or projects above the lowest point of the eaves or the top of a parapet wall of any building or that is painted or fastened to a roof. Sandwich board movable sign, a non-illuminated portable sign located on an A-frame support that is not attached to the ground or an adjacent structure, such sign shall stand on legs and shall not exceed forty-two inches in height. The sign shall indicate no more than the name of the business, special event, hours of operation, sale of a product, services and prices. So that, the ideal is, is a cafe menu board. Or, or, you know, a hardware store can do stuff too. And the idea is it's taken in at night. And I think that's covered elsewhere. Window sign, a sign that's applied, oh, permit, sign permit, a permit issued by the building department, building inspector of buildings, sure. Inspector of buildings for the erection, construction, enlargement, alterations, repair or improvement of any sign. Window sign, a sign that is applied, painted, affixed to a window, placed inside a window within four feet of the glass, facing the outside of the building and easily seen from the outside. Customary displays of merchandise and objects without lettering behind a store window are not considered signs. I think one of the things we'd like to do is try and draw people's eyes into the building. You're walking down the street and when the sign stops your eye, I think it's a lost business opportunity. It's, try and have something inside, just a few feet back, make a display of some product or something, entice people in, just. We're just trying to make sure that people don't stop your eye with minutia. And just dumb stuff, the sale of the week, uh, the hairdresser down, down there. And that's it. That's where we're at. It's a very good group.
I, I get one question on the sign permit.
But we're at the front, where are you at?
Page fourteen, right here. Permit issued by the building department, building inspector for the erection, construction, enlargement, alteration, repair, improvement of any sign. And then the window sign is applied, painted or affixed, so I don't know if you want to put that in the definition of a sign permit? Because.
Yeah.
All right.
Construction, enlargement, applied, painted, affixed.
All right, all right, that's good.
Hey, could, could combine them two.
Yeah, I think that's smart.
Good, good one, Dan.
Applied, painted or affixed.
Yeah, I'm just taking it from the window sign, so it would be any sign, sign, window sign.
Just any sign.
And visible to the public or visible from the public?
I don't care about that.
Okay.
That's up to you guys.
All right. All right, we'll find a way to work that in.
Any other questions or comments on that particular?
It says in the, that this is the public hearing for this? This is, isn't the public hearing, this is just.
This is the public.
So we, we have to vote on this tonight for town meeting?
Uh, yes, because, uh, this is the last, our last opportunity for the board to meet before the warrant closes.
Okay.
Yeah, warrant closes, warrant closes on the ninth, I believe.
Yes.
Ninth, so we gotta get this done.
So can I make a motion that we approve the?
Changes as written.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the downtown district sign regulations as presented and amended for this evening to present to town meeting.
I think between the two of us, we have caught all of them.
Yes.
And that's, that can be done.
Yep.
Happy to do it.
Motion from Dan to air a second?
Second.
Second. Any further comments from the audience? Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, and Amanda.
Amanda, you on?
E.
Wow.
Wake up.
I thought you fell asleep.
She's hanging on everyone.
Okay, the next, unfortunately, under the same guidelines, we have to get this done before the warrant closes, so. Multi-family housing, section three A in the downtown district. I mean, this is, we're all right. We did that?
Yeah, this, just this. Chairman, can I just provide a quick update on?
Okay. We presented the information to the board of selectmen, uh, select board on August thirteenth. That was a couple of weeks ago and I did hear back from the state and they are asking for more information on the compliance modeling that was done. So, um, I think the plan is to not bring this to special town meeting and to bring it to annual town meeting in May. This would give more time to
I like it.
Get all the information on the website, do some more outreach and make sure that that pre-application is approved by the state.
And this does not have to be done until December of twenty twenty-five, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we have time.
Correct.
Okay, so, yeah, I think I remember saying that at the meeting, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, in case of emergency.
Right, right.
All you guys are talking, entertain a motion to continue this.
Oh, do we? We don't think we have to.
Do we? We're not having a hearing on?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
John?
Oh, yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
No, I wanna.
Yes.
Amanda?
Who's second?
No, no, no.
Who's, who's second in that motion?
Yep.
Yes. Oh, my gosh, now we have to say it, Amanda!
Okay, let me just turn this down.
Can't wait to be retired. Two.
Good night, thank you.
Mr. Carbone, what brings you here? We just.
I just, what's going on?